Ladies and gentlemen, take your seats. Pursuant to applicable law and my determination that attendance by remote means is necessary because an in-person meeting, fully in-person meeting, is not practical or prudent. This meeting is conducted in person and via video conference. We'll now have a roll call vote to establish quorum. Please note your yes or present response will be deemed a yes vote when the quorum call is used as a reference vote for later items. Willie Alderman, please make sure that your microphones are unmuted, obviously that's for Aldermen that are appearing remotely. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
Present.
Alderman Hopkins.
Present, remote.
Alderman Dow.
Here.
Alderman King.
Present.
Alderman Hairston.
Present.
Alderman Sawyer.
Here.
Alderman Mitchell.
Here.
Alderman Harris.
Here.
Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Zelowski Garza.
Here.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Alderman Cardenas.
Here.
Alderman Quinn.
Here.
Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Present.
Alderman Curtis.
Present.
Alderman O'Shea.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Brookins.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Tabarez.
Present.
Alderman Scott.
Present.
Alderman Ticho Lopez.
Present.
Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett.
Present.
Alderman Irvin. Alderman Talafaro.
Present.
Alderman Raboyas.
Alderman Irvin is present.
Alderman Irvin is present.
Alderman Irvin is present. Yeah, I'll be there in a few minutes.
Alderman Irvin is remote and present. Alderman Cardona.
Present.
Alderman Wagispack.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Presenta.
Present and on remote. Alderman Austin.
Present.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Present.
Alderman Vegas. Alderman Metz. Alderman Spisato.
Nick Spisato is here and present, live and present.
Alderman Nugent.
Present.
Alderman Vasquez.
Present.
Alderman Napolitano.
Present.
Alderman Riley.
Present.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Tunny.
Present.
Alderman Gardner.
Present.
Alderman Kaplan.
Present.
Alderman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Ostroman.
Present.
Alderman Haddon. Alderman Silverstein, present. Anyone I missed?
Ladies and gentlemen, there are forty-seven present, we have a quorum. Will now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The invocation will be delivered by Pastor Randall K. Blakey from Osale Street Church. Pastor?
Let us pray. Gracious and merciful God, we've gathered today because we believe that this is the day that you have made, and we shall rejoice, God, and we shall be glad in it today. God, I lift this mayor and these elected officials to you right now, and I ask that you wrap your arms tightly around them. Help us now, Lord God, to lay aside every weight and even the sin that so easily entangles us, and help us to set our eyes up on you, who is the author, the developer, and even the finisher of our faith. For our faith comes by hearing and hearing by your word, and it's at the entrance of your word that there is indeed light. So, God, we thank you for your word this morning, for your word says that when the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; but when the wicked rule, the people mourn. We thank you, Lord God, for causing the people of Chicago to rejoice this morning because the righteous are in place. Fill them now with the knowledge of your will, with all wisdom and spiritual understanding, God, that they might walk worthy unto you, unto all pleasing, that the eyes of their understanding might be enlightened, to know the hope of the calling that you've called them to through your mighty word. Order their footsteps according to your word, and allow your word to be a lamp unto their feet and a light even unto their path. God, make this place the establishment of your word upon which all decisions are made. We break up, Lord God, all of the fallow ground right now that would hinder the work that you've called them to do on this day for such a time as this. And we thank you, God, for restoring the years that the canker worm has so tried to devour. We release the oils of joy and even the garment of praise, and we pray, God, that they be anxious for nothing but everything by prayer and supplication, making their requests known unto you, and you in return will cause the peace of God that transcends all understanding to keep their hearts and even their minds in you. Help them to make the kind of decisions that make the weak say, "I am strong," and make the poor say, "I am rich." Now unto you who is able to keep all of us from falling, now unto you who is able to make all grace and every earthly favor and blessing abound towards us, now unto you who is able to do exceedingly abundantly above all that we can ask or think, be glory, dominion, and power. But we don't ask these prayers in our name, but rather in yours. We ask these prayers in your name, and all of God's people said, "Amen."
Amen.
Amen. And amen. Give the Lord a handpraise.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's now time for public comment.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for Aldermanic review. The first speaker is Thomas McLeary.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council and those who are witness here. My name is Thomas McElroy from Level One Global Solutions, and I am part of the team, the GRIT team, for the Bronzeville Lakefront Project, which is on today's agenda, and I am in full and complete support of that. This is now the city's opportunity to bring the same kind of high-level technology, infrastructure, jobs, and future that exists on other parts of the city to Chicago's South Side, Bronzeville Lakefront. It is long overdue. We look forward to its successful pack passage. It is an opportunity to extend technology and other things to other surrounding communities. It is an opportunity for the kinds of jobs that can support families, the kinds of contracts to minority and women-owned businesses so that they can grow, move forward, and be active participants in their community. And again, I completely and totally support this. I hope the members of the City Council do also, and look forward to its passage today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McLeary, for your comments. Our next speaker is Mr. George Blakemore. I was listening to the Reverend, the righteous, the righteous. They're not here. I say they are not here is waste, fraud, and abuse. Institutional racism is right here, right here. And I told my black Altymans, all of them, they're disgraceful, they're shameful, and the ancestors are not happy with you, with your vote, all of you out. How could you sit silent, silent, and go along with this illegal immigrants coming into to your neighborhood and to this city in this county? Silent! Illegal means against the law. In a few minutes, when my three minutes is up, Mr. Blakemore, your three minutes is up. That's the law! How could you do that, you black cockers? How could you do that? Because you're sellouts, you angry momma's. The ancestors hate you. Something is wrong here. Now you're crying because the Hispanics are coming in and they're saying they want one or two or three more Altymans. One of you, are they gonna pick 'em from the white Altymans? No! They're gonna get 'em from you, you black ones. These people are illegal, against the law. If anybody needs sanctuary, your community need it. You're a legal citizen, and then they're censors. How you gonna count illegal as a citizen? And they come to compete with blacks for good service, contracts, and jobs, and not even legal citizens. The negative effect, now they start going good my time, that Carl Anderson say has on the black community competing in education, close up fifty black schools and go open up twenty school for the Hispanics. Something is wrong here. Something stink here. Something is corrupt here. Institutional racism and shameful, all of you going along kumbaya with your enemy. Kumbaya. When Harold Washington, they had a conflict because these were men, black men and women who stood up for their community, and you just grinning and ginning down here, telling us out. You're not righteous. The law is... Now watch, when I get my time up, Mr. Blakemore, gone now, gone, your minutes is up. That's the law. Mr. Blakemore, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Alina Gormley.
Good morning. My name is Alina Gormley. I am a social worker and a member of Social Service Workers United, Chicago, and the Collaborative for Community Wellness. I realize that the City Council and the mayor are slated to have a victory lap today and celebrate the passage of ECPS, a victory lap that none of you really earned because too many of you and the mayor obstructed multiple versions that would have actually provided true accountability. I am here as a social worker because I am deeply disgusted by the implementation of the police co-responder model, which was implemented this month, and would partner police with social workers or other mental health workers on mental health crisis calls. I am a recent social work graduate, and I was told repeatedly in my course work that our code of ethics is something that we need to take seriously and that we don't get to pick and choose parts of the code of ethics to follow. It is clear-cut ethical misconduct for social workers to partner with armed agents of the state that have broad authority to kill Chicagoans with impunity. We are required to uphold the dignity and worth of every person, to center the individual right of self-determination, and to not practice outside of my scope, and I can personally say my scope of practice does not involve state-sponsored oppression, and also to, and we are mandated to fight all forms of oppression and racism. You cannot follow the social work code of ethics while partnering with cops, period. I am calling on City Council and the mayor to allocate $100 million of American Recovery Plan Act funds to fully reopen every closed public mental health clinic, to fully staff every existing public mental health clinic, and to fully fund treatment, not trauma, which would be a non-police crisis response model where mental health workers and healthcare workers would partner and respond to calls without police and would center people's autonomy and dignity to make sure that the interventions provided would not cause further trauma. Because as social workers, we have too long of a history of being cops by another name and a different dress code. We need treatment, not trauma, and we need true anti-oppressive forms of crisis response and mental health care in the city of Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gormley, for your comments. Our next speaker is Jody Whitaker.
Good morning. My name is Jody Whitaker. I am speaking today on behalf of the Chicago Alliance for Animals, more than 2,900 members. SO 2020-2827, the ordinance introduced by Alderman Bryan Hopkins to close the loophole that pet stores have been using to flout the law and sell dogs from unscrupulous sources, passed unanimously in the City Council back in April. Mayor Lightfoot, you signed this humane legislation in May. Alderman Hopkins responded to one of my tweets back on June 3rd and stated that the law was in full force and effect. Yet, on July 21st, nearly fifty days later, two stores remain open and continue to sell dogs for thousands, not the nominal fee that is clearly stated in the law. We understand there is a legal process, but it should not take this long for a law that passed basically in 2014 to take effect. We asked the mayor, if a liquor store continually sold alcohol every single day to minors, how long would it take the city to pull their license? We were told by Chicago Animal Care and Control last week that the owner of Pocket Puppies informed them that he will be shutting down at the end of July. He should not have a say in this matter. He is the one breaking the law, and he is the one who's flouted the intent of the law for more than seven years. Business Affairs and Consumer Protection informed us yesterday that these stores have been cited, but that they cannot revoke their licenses immediately. Fifty days is not immediate. There is more than enough evidence to have cited these businesses multiple times, escalated these cases, and revoked their licenses. Please enforce SO 2020-2827 today, and finally shut down these shady shops that are trafficking puppies and who flat-out refuse to follow Chicago's law and work with Chicago's animal shelters and rescues. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you very much, Ms. Whitaker, for your comments. Our next speaker is Jackie Page.
Good morning, City Council and residents of Chicago. I am here today to speak about compliance and accountability, or the lack thereof. You see, I attended a city council, no, I apologize, a CHA, Chicago Housing Authority, board meeting yesterday, and I was supposed to speak. They had technical difficulties, and the public comment portion was not held. Now, anytime you are dealing with public dollars, you are supposed to have what we're having right now, a public comment portion of the meeting. Not only did they not have it, but they continued on with the meeting and continued on to pass resolutions. Now, to my way of thinking, anytime that you are in non-compliance, you should stop holding the meeting until such times as you become in compliance. I say that there is a culture of flaunting the law in city government. They do not pay attention to the rules and the regulations that we as citizens are held up to pay attention to and penalized for ourselves. Now, I think that everything that was voted on at that board meeting should be undone, and that meeting should be held again, and the public should be able to give their public comments. This is done because people are comfortable in their positions, because they suffer no consequences when they flaunt and break the law and rules and policies. That is what goes on in the city of Chicago. No one pays attention to the rules. I was at that meeting because a resident was given a unit that was molded. She was forced to live in that unit. She was told, "Take this unit or do not take anything. You will be kicked out of the program." She took that unit, and that unit tested positive for mold. Not only did it test positive for mold, she was remained in that unit. She still lives in that unit. She suffers viral infections. Her children suffer viral infections. Nothing is done for her. Why? Because people are comfortable in non-compliance. They are comfortable that nothing will happen if they don't do their jobs. Such is what happens in Chicago.
Ms. Page, thank you for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Margaret Gardner.
Please press star six to unmute.
Good morning, City Council, Honorable Madam Mayor, and Honorable City Council and Honorable Emma Metz. My name is Margaret Gardner, and I've worked with the Honorable Emma Metz of the Thirty-Seventh Board for almost twenty years. I come today to speak in support of the lease for the Boys and Girls Clubs of Chicago's very first new club in a generation. There has never been a more urgent need for quality after-school programming for so many of our at-risk, at-risk youths in neighborhoods throughout Chicago, but most importantly, on the West and South Sides. So much of the trauma our youth are facing has been a result of our society's historic systemic racism and injustice directed at people of color. This has produced generations of disinvestment and neglect, an epidemic of pain, and what we see more than enough, hurt and death. Now there is an opportunity to be bold and innovative, to think outside the box and actually do something that can break down barriers and create a new and better reality. The Boys and Girls Clubs of Chicago has been providing these opportunities and mentorship to Chicago's most undersourced, resource-y youth for over nearly a hundred years. They have been serving as one of the city's largest and most successful youth development organizations. They have worked hard to engage, listen, and build trust with community residents. Boys and Girls Clubs provide a wide way of critically needed programming to tens and thousands of young people, ranging from academic support, sports activities, health, wellness, leadership, and character building. The Aldermen and the community are so appreciative of this opportunity to bring this type of programming, and it has been a vision for the Aldermen for over twenty years to bring a youth center like this in partnership to this community, for the West Side community, for the greater West Side community. City Council, we hope that you support our vision, the Aldermen's vision, and the community's support by passing the approval for this Boys and Girls Club of Chicago's lease today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner, for your comments. Our next speaker is Jerome Thaddeusson.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jerome Thaddeusson, and I'm a police officer and former Boys and Girls Club member. I would like to speak in support of the lease for New Boys and Girls Clubs of Chicago Facility. I want you guys to imagine what it's like being a kid on Chicago's West Side. You can't play in a neighborhood park because the gangs hang there, and you worry if a rival gang is gonna do a drive-by. Your neighborhood school's closed, so you have to fight just to go to school in another gang's area, and there's a lack of resources in your community to help people overcome poverty. That was my neighborhood until the James Jordan Boys and Girls Club came. The joint club was a safe haven for me and my peers. It allowed us to play and have fun, but most of all, we learned. We had to do our homework before we was able to play basketball. The staff mentored us, challenged us to apply ourselves in school, and showed us the path to be better than our environment. Not only did the club help my peers, but the young gang members as well. Many of them gave up their gang lifestyles and figured out their talents in sports, arts in school. People that dropped out became motivated to get their GEDs, and even the other gangs in the same community started coming to the Boys and Girls Club. The kids my neighborhood once fought against for their gang became friends in the club. I went from attending an underperforming elementary school to getting accepted into lame tech. The club helped me to prepare for the ACT and SAT tests, helped me apply for financial aid, helped me attend college tours, and awarded me a scholarship to attend college. As I look back, I went from nearly joining the gang to a college graduate with a master's degree to a police officer. When I tell people my story, they act, "How did I overcome my environment?" I tell them it was with the support of the Boys and Girls Club. Today, I ask you all one thing, to give the children in the Austin, West Garfield Park, West Hubble Park communities the same opportunities that I had while at the Boys and Girls Club to support the lease for New Boys and Girls Clubs of Chicago Facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thaddeusson, for your comments. Our next speaker is Robert Grillo.
As an intersectional justice activist who founded the Slaughter-Free Cities Movement here in the city that once promoted itself as the slaughter capital of the world, I have reported on how animal agriculture is the main culprit behind the most serious problems we face today: the climate crisis, the collapse of ecosystems, and the mass extinction of species, extreme weather events, wildfires, drought, deforestation, zoonotic pandemics, chronic disease, food instability and deserts, inequality, hunger, human rights abuses, including slave labor, and unacceptably hazardous work conditions. I could go on. There are some glimmers of hope. Natural Find is building a 35,000-square-foot plant-based meat and dairy factory with initial capital investments of 150 million from the likes of Jeff Bezos, Bill Gates, Michael Bloomberg, and Al Gore. Built on the ruins of what was once the largest industrial slaughter complex in the world, the Chicago Union Stockyards, the location could not be a more symbolic sign of the times, as well as a testament to our efforts to shift the cultural paradigm away from our use and abuse of animals. In the same week, I read about Mayor Lightfoot's Meat Festival, the Windy City Smokeout. You can imagine how upset I am to find the mayor using our tax dollars to promote an industry that profits off of immense suffering and destruction, and is arguably even more of a threat than the fossil fuel industry. Humans and non-human humans are dying as a result of our inaction. The life support systems of our planet are collapsing. Some of the worst impacts can no longer be reversed or controlled. You may believe that this is a global problem that requires global cooperation. I agree. However, the struggle is also here, locally, in urban centers like Chicago. And what better place than the city that once made huge fortunes on the backs of countless immigrant workers and animals? We set the important examples that will inspire the world to follow. You are the ones the public relies on for leadership, vision, and creative solutions. It's not too late for you to change course. I'm asking you to be brave. Shed the delusional thinking and denial that prevents us from seriously confronting this huge challenge of our own survival. Slaughter-Free Cities proposes three important next steps. One, a sweeping plant-based food program that is accessible to all. Number two, a complete divestment from animal agriculture. And three, a symbolic ban on the last remaining skeletons of the slaughterhouse industry that operate here illegally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grillo, for your comments. Our next speaker is Julia Barlett.
Hi. Good afternoon or good morning, City Council members. My name is Julia Bartmess, and I serve as the Executive Director for the Illinois Nurses Association, a labor union that represents nurses statewide, including those employed by the city of Chicago. We are a member of the Right to Recovery Coalition, and we are in support... We are a member of the Right to Recovery Coalition, and we are in support of the Chicago Rescue Plan, which would provide $100 million in funding for mental health clinics, as well as adopt other measures that would assist the city's most vulnerable communities at a time when they need support more than ever. Mayor Lightfoot, you campaigned on a promise to reopen the city's mental health clinics that were closed in 2012. This is an opportunity for you to make good on those promises, which were made to the INA PAC when you met with us, but also to the people of the city, the people of the city that are still asking that these clinics be reopened. The Rescue Act is also an opportunity for the City Council to say, "We see you. We see you as the citizens of this city, as the city's vulnerable communities, and we are dedicated to helping restore the services that you are asking for." When the mental health clinics were closed, the Health Commissioner at the time said that closing those clinics and allowing private ownership and privatization of those services would allow the city more time to track what the needs are and to work behind the scenes, so to speak, gathering information. Yet, the city can't account for what happened to individuals that were receiving treatment before the 2012 closures, and officials remain unsure of the number of people that were treated at those clinics that went on to get treated by the private organizations. CDPH itself has acknowledged that it did not specifically track these people, and these are people that fell through the cracks, similar to the people that fell through the cracks when the Inglewood STI clinic closed a couple of years ago. In a time when public health is more important than ever, and when the people of the city that are suffering the most are being given, quite frankly, the least support, it's time to change that. And the nurses that work within these communities, the city nurses, of which there are only around 40 left at this point, these are nurses that work out in the-
Thank you, Ms. Barlett, for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Adrian Harmon.
Good morning. I'd like to say thank you for having me here today, and I am here to speak in support of the new lease for the Boys and Girls Club on the West Side. My name is Adrian, and I live in the West Hubble Park neighborhood of Chicago. I've lived here all my life. When I was younger, there wasn't a lot of support in my neighborhood. My local school was going through some transition, so I ended up finding a high school further away. I chose to go further away because it was safer and felt more promising. But at the same time, I felt sad to have to leave my neighborhood to find safety, to find a place to thrive. Luckily, I found the Linda and Bill Gantz Boys and Girls Club, and last year, I was named their 2020 Youth of the Year. I would like to share a portion of my speech with you to help you understand why I think having a club in this neighborhood is such a good thing. When I fall asleep at night, I find myself dreaming of my ideal neighborhood: safe, clean, vibrant. These words have never been used to describe my neighborhood: ghost towns, threatening shadows, sirens sing my lullaby. This is where I live. Everyone has a story, and mine begins in the West Hubble Park neighborhood of Chicago. When I was little, I loved playing basketball, eating pizza, and sleepovers with my cousins. But I knew from the age of six that when I heard gunshots, I had to drop to the ground. I wasn't growing up in a neighborhood that everyone dreams of. West Hubble Park has everything from people loitering on street corners to needles in the grass, to trees don't even want to grow there. I knew I had to find a better way out. This West Side Club can and will be a way to build communities and neighborhoods that need to be united. I ask for the City Council's support in this new lease. That way, every youth in the West Hubble Park, West Austin, and the West Garfield Park areas has the same chance that I did when I found the Linda and Bill Gantz Boys and Girls Club. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon, for your comments. Our final speaker today is Carla Luna.
Hello, everyone. Hi, everyone. My name is Carla Luna. I'm a resident of the southeast side of Chicago. I'm a current student at the University of Illinois at Chicago and have been researching public mental health services and mental health crisis response models as an intern for Brighton Park Neighborhood Council and as a member of the Collaborative for Community Vol. My research has shown me that the CIT policing model of mental health crisis response is not effective, and the mere presence of an armed police officer will exacerbate any crisis being responded to. The CIT model consists of only 40 hours of training, three of which are usually spent on a graduation lunch. This is not as effective as a social worker or a mental health worker with a minimum of two years of experience in de-escalation. The Police Academy trains officers to view noncompliance as a form of resistance in which they need to use more force. On the other hand, mental health workers are person-centered, focusing on asking questions and how they can de-escalate. There is limited research that finds the CIT method effective. Some studies actually show that CIT-trained officers use more force. This was the case with Derek Shobin, a CIT-trained officer that murdered George Floyd. All the while, a growing body of research finds that non-police response is effective. For example, in Eugene, Oregon, which implements a program named Kahoot. In the past 30 years, they have not been responsible for death or serious injuries. Additionally, in 2019, out of 24,000 calls, only 150 calls required police backup. These situations required the restraint of individuals. For example, the case of an individual who was in the middle of the street. Legally, Kahoots could not restrain them, and that is why the police were called. As a result, Kahoots responders have never harmed anyone or been harmed. A year's worth of data from Denver's Non-Police Crisis Response Pilot also had zero calls for police backup, zero arrests, and zero people harmed. Additionally, it is not only a matter of responding to people in a moment of crisis, but it is also about providing follow-up services that are accessible. Investing in a public mental health model is so important in addressing barriers and connecting people to ongoing support. Research shows private insurance is mostly used by the white population. Public services are widely used by people of color. However, there are only limited services available. Cost of insurance, language barriers, transportation, wait time are all barriers that prohibit our community from accessing services. I have experienced this firsthand. While looking for therapy covered under my insurance, there was no availability within the next seven months. I had to pay out of pocket for these services. Additionally, I see how Spanish speakers struggle even more because interpreters or multilingual mental health professionals are not available under public insurance or have too long of a wait because of their large pool of clients. Today, I call on all of our elected officials to invest in federal relief funding on the public mental health infrastructure dismantled by the previous two administrations, and ask Mayor Lightfoot to keep her campaign promise to invest in re-establishing public mental health centers so we no longer have to rely on the police to respond to people in crisis.
Thank you, Ms. Luna, for your comments. However, your time has expired. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, next up, resolutions. We have two resolutions today: a memorial resolution for Frida Fritzzy Fritzall and a congratulatory resolution for John Tully. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of these resolutions.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. In the interest of respecting people's time, we will forego the reading of the resolutions in their entirety, and instead hear remarks from members of the City Council who wish to speak on these resolutions. The first resolution is honoring Fritzzy Fritzall, and I believe that we have in the box members of her family, Steve Fritzall, the son, is that correct? And as well as Howard Swible of the Illinois Holocaust Museum. Thank you all for being here. The Chair recognizes Alderman Silverstein.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm proud to stand in support of this resolution. Our city lost a major voice in the fight against bigotry and hatred with the passing of Frida Fritzzy Fritzl, president of the Illinois Holocaust Museum and lifelong crusader for social justice. A Holocaust survivor herself, she overcame the atrocities of Auschwitz and went on to dedicate her life to making this world a better place. First, I would like to recognize Fritzzy's son, Stephen, who is with us here today, as you heard. Your mother's dedication towards ending antisemitism and the refugee crisis inspired people all over the world to become upstanders instead of bystanders and join her in the fight against hatred and prejudice. She was born Fritzzy Weiss in 1929 in pre-war Czechoslovakia. When the Nazis invaded, she was deported, together with her mother and two brothers, to the Auschwitz-Birkenau concentration camp. She was only 13 years old at the time, but upon the advice of a stranger, she lined up with the 15-year-olds and truly believes that that is what saved her life. Her mother and brothers were murdered. Fritzzy endured a year in Auschwitz and a related Nazi camp where she performed slave labor in a factory. In 1945, she was liberated by the Soviet Army after escaping into a nearby forest during a death march. After the war, Fritzzy came to Skokie, Illinois, and reunited with her father. She married Norman Fritzall, a U.S. veteran of World War II, who had been a prisoner of war in the Pacific, and together they built a life in the Chicagoland area. Fritzzy devoted her life to combating hatred and prejudice, telling her harrowing story of survival and speaking out to make our world a better place. She joined with other survivors to establish the Holocaust Memorial Foundation of Illinois in 1981 in response to an attempt to neo-Nazis to march through the streets of Skokie. She also helped convince Governor James Thompson to sign the Holocaust Education Mandate into law, making Illinois the first state in the country to require the teaching of the Holocaust in all public schools. In 2009, the Illinois Holocaust Museum and Education Center opened in Skokie, bringing a world-class educational institution to the Chicagoland area. Fritzzy served as its president since 2010. Under her leadership, the museum grew to inspire more than 280,000 individuals annually and introduced interactive 3D holograms of survivors as a way to preserve their stories for generations to come. Fritzzy fulfilled her life goal. She left the world a far better place than she found it. She is survived by her son, Stephen, daughter-in-law, Hinda, grandson, Scott, and Andy, and many other family members and friends. She had a tremendous impact on me and was truly an inspiration for the entire population of the 50th Ward and everyone in Chicago who believes in her cause. It is my great privilege to co-sponsor this resolution honoring Frida Fritzzy Fritzall, and I pray that it causes more people to visit the Holocaust Museum, hear her story, interact with her hologram, and learn from her life. May her memory be for a blessing. Thank you.
Alderman Silverstein, the Chair recognizes- The Chair recognizes Alderman Smith.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I am a Jew, and many members of my family are unknown to me. When we came over in 1908, members of my family, many were left behind, and even a couple came and went back because they were not comfortable in the New World and were basically never heard from again. I'm so honored by the work that Fritzzy has done, because many people, many, many people in this room have family that they did not know what happened to them. They were lost by brutality hundreds of years ago in our own country and didn't have the means of communication that we have today to preserve their stories and say, "Never again." And many members of my family and many, many other Jewish families never knew their past because when people were freed from the Holocaust, they came to America and said, "I'm never going to think about this again." And you can imagine why they didn't, because those events can overshadow you and kill you inside and prevent you from having a family. But Fritzzy and some other brave people like her said, "No, we are going to perform a higher calling. We are going to remember." And this is the lesson that her work has done, is by helping people know that these things actually happened to people. And I know they actually happened to people. My brother-in-law went back to Hungary before the pandemic and discovered that both his grandparents were on a forced march, a death march, there, and their village and his family was wiped out. And fortunately, his father managed to escape to Palestine. But what we know here and what the Holocaust Museum and those marchers in Skokie and what Fritzzy did is taught us that the way to make sure things never happen again is to keep telling people what they experienced and what they knew, and that is the way to reconciliation, and that is the way to make sure that we actually can make the future better. So I want to thank Fritzzy for whatever she did, for everything that she did, and also echo my co-Alderman Silverstein in is encouraging people to go to the Holocaust Museum, because that is how we learn together to avoid these horrible events in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. The Chair recognizes Alderman Raboyas.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand in support of this resolution. I want to thank my colleague from the 50th Ward for bringing this matter here today. I never had the pleasure of meeting Frida, but I can tell you that several years ago, my colleague Chairman Teleferro and I visited Auschwitz. And I can tell you that it's unbelievable what we saw. It was difficult for us to continue our journey when we were in Poland and visiting Auschwitz. And the sad part about this is that there were, the numbers are not exact on how many lives were lost, how many Jewish lives were lost, but I know it's in excess of 6 million people and family members. The crimes against humanity that were committed here were atrocious, and we must never forget. Auschwitz was a combination of several camps and sub-camps. There were concentration camps, death camps, and labor camps. I cannot imagine the condition and the horror this 13-year-old Frida went through had to endure, but endured she did. By the grace of an unknown man who whispered to her, "Lie about your age," she was sent to a slave labor camp instead of death. Years later, she managed to escape. Thank God she did. She was one of the lucky ones, but so are we. Due to her decision to talk about her own experiences and her dedication to establish the Holocaust Memorial Foundation and educate us all, and she did educate us all, by sharing not only her story, but those of us who also survived, we can learn from history to never repeat crimes against humanity. We should never hate those who are different from us. Let us not forget. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Raboyas. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitch.
Thank you, Madam President. I too like to rise in support of this resolution. I thank my colleague Alderman Silverstein for even asking me to be a co-sponsor. And when I saw the resolution, right away, I said, "Yes." And let me tell you why, because I learned something that I did not even know, and I think that the world sometimes don't know what people go through, but you learn. Myself and Alderman Michelle Harris had an opportunity some years back to visit Israel, and it was my first time visiting the Holocaust Museum. It just blew my mind because I didn't even know the story. But going through on that tour, seeing how people were literally taken one by one and shot them and just put them in- in a ditch. Their boots, their uniforms, and all these officers taking little kids. I mean, it was just so many, and I just didn't realize that that took place in the world. So it was an eye-opener to say, "You don't know until the shoe is on your feet. You just don't know. So don't pass judgment. Just know that we are all human beings put on this earth, and we should all learn to educate ourselves if we don't know about history." And that was a history lesson for me. I thank you for having the museum because I never would have known that story and grateful for someone who stood up and wanted to pass it on through generation so that they would know what took place long before many of us was born. So thank you all. Thank the family for being here in honor of Ms. Fritzall and continue to carry on her legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Metz. The chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too rise, and I'm honored to be a co-sponsor on this resolution. I want to thank my colleague Alderman Silverstein for inviting me to be a part of this. To Stephen and his family, to Fritzi's family, your mom, your grandmother was a true inspiration, taking a tragic experience and turning that into a life commitment to fighting bigotry and hatred and inspiring many more to do the same. On behalf of the residents of the 11th Ward, again, I'm honored to be a part of this resolution, and I wish all of you well, and thank you for allowing Fritzi to be a part of a much larger family than just yours, and her efforts have reached many, many more, and hopefully we can all continue to fight bigotry and hatred that your mom inspired many to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Thompson. The chair recognizes Alderman Capelman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise and support this resolution. In 1982, I traveled to Israel and I saw the Holocaust Museum, and it just blew me away. I just couldn't believe what I saw. And soon afterwards, a few months later, I joined the Franciscan Order. I was a Franciscan monk in Detroit, and I got in trouble because I would go to the Jewish Community Center there to do Israeli folk dance, and I became friends with Sunny Segal. Sunny Segal was about three years old when she and her entire family went to Auschwitz. Her family was... Hitler promised not to gas them because she was born in Great Britain, and that's what saved her life. My father-in-law served in World War II, and he had the job of helping to liberate many of the Auschwitz people, camp survivors. And the thing he talked about was many of them couldn't get out of bed. They were so weak. I always believed that this could never happen again, and I've come to believe, starting in 2016, that it can, and that's why this story has to be told over and over and over again. So thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Capelman, the chair recognizes Alderman Ostrom.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to rise in support of this in honor, your mom and family, Fritzi Fritzall. And I want to commend Alderwoman Silverstein for bringing this forward to us. I think, as Alderman Capelman said, the work of reminding people about tragedies of the Holocaust is something that's present with us today. And in addition to the Holocaust Museum, she helped pass a state law that taught Illinois students about the tragedies of the Holocaust. When we had our budget hearing, Human Relations Commission talked this last year about the increased times, increased cases of antisemitism, hatred that goes on against our Jewish brothers and sisters. So the work that she started, the vision that she had, working with other people, continues to put this important work in the forefront. There are people that want to use every opportunity to misinform and to spread hate, and her work, her life's legacy, is to counteract that with good and to inform us all to be watchful on how we can fight hate together with love. So she will stay with us, and her work will carry on. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Ostrom. Any other members of the body who wish to speak to this resolution? I will just say that I join the members of this body and commend Alderman Silverstein in bringing this resolution forward. Unfortunately, we know that antisemitism is alive in our world, as is xenophobia and racism and other forms of hate. The work that Frida Fritzall and others have done to not only help us remember the horrors of the genocide of the Holocaust, but also serving as an opportunity for healing, for bringing communities together, that is the work that we all must be about. We're seeing a time where the survivors who have come to this country are now passing, but I hope that we continue to lift up their legacy by living a life that is worthy of their sacrifice, but also to make sure that we truly never forget. I personally believe that an attack on the Jewish community is an attack on me as a resident and as a neighbor, as a black woman, as a lesbian. I know what hate looks like, and I want to make sure that we are unified in our support of all communities that are victims of hate in our city and across our country. I want to thank and commend the Illinois Holocaust Museum. The work that you do is just tremendous, and particularly the work where you have memorialized the testimonies of Holocaust survivors so that all of us, for generations to come, will be able to understand, in their words, feeling their passion, their emotion, the experience of having survived what is only, can be characterized as one of the most horrific atrocities known to man. So I want to thank you for the work and continuing work and urge members of the body and members of the public to support the work of the Holocaust Museum. Again, I want to thank you, Alderman Silverstein, and also members of the Jewish community here in our city, particularly our Orthodox community, who has endured so much, so much pain. An attack anywhere in the world resonates here deeply. I once spoke to somebody in the Orthodox community here following an attack that happened in California, and his words have stayed with me to this day. Reached out to find out how they were doing, and he said, "I never thought that I'd feel like the hunted. I never thought that when I was in synagogue, humbling myself before my God, that I had to worry about the next person walking down the aisle." That unfortunately is a reality of way too many people here and across the nation and across our world, so let us never forget. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I request adoption of the resolution, pardon me, by a resolution by rising vote.
Ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. There's a second resolution. Let me give a moment for other family to transition. There is a second resolution to congratulate John Tully on his retirement, and we'll go straight to remarks. Give us a moment for Commissioner Tully and his family to join us in the box. Anybody who wish to speak to this resolution? Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, I rise in support of this resolution. Commissioner, you're an awesome man. I've loved working with you as the commissioner. You've been quiet when you needed to be quiet. You've been boisterous when you needed to be boisterous, but more than that, you've been effective for our communities, and I thank you for looking at us all individually and handling our efforts. I thank you for your patience, and sometimes we sit in a room and tempers boil over. I never saw you lose your temper. Look, he knows what I'm talking about. So I thank you, and I appreciate that as these meetings sometime get very emotional as we talk about our communities and represent our communities in all kinds of different ways. Know that you are appreciated in ways that you'll never know, and I thank you for your leadership in this position again, and appreciate you, and I wish you and your family the best on the new part of your life as they have more time with you. And so thank you again for your leadership and what you've done for the residents of the A-4.
Thank you, Alderman Harris. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this resolution with a heavy heart. You know, Commissioner, you've been in the trenches with us for a long time here in this city, and you have done a yeoman's job, I can honestly say, throughout your entire career. There's not been one time that I have not called you and you have not delivered services for the people of this great city, and you have trained a great staff to get them to understand that in this city, it's all about serving the people, and you have done that beyond belief. And I know your family is going to love to have you around because you've worked long hours, whether it be snow, rain, storms, I mean, you name it, power outages. I mean, you were always on the front line, and so I couldn't let this moment go by without saying from the bottom of my heart, "Thank you for your service," and thank you to your family for allowing you to serve the people of this great city. Thank you so much. Congratulations, man, and best of luck to you in your next endeavors. Thank you so much. God bless you.
I thank you, Alderman Beal. The chair recognizes Alderman Raboyas.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand in support of this resolution. John, I know that you've worked for a long time, and you have a family. You need to appreciate your family. You need to stand with your family now. You've done your job. I remember I was a truck driver, and I don't know if you were on in '79, but it's got to be pretty close, just shortly thereafter. And I know the job that you did. I know what it entails, and I believe that in years to come, we may not have the authority to call your office where we go to now because you and your office and Streets and Sand can make us or break us. It's a job that we dearly care for. It's a job that you've done all your life in city government, and that needs to be commended. So thank you for your years of working with us and really appreciate your family and share some time with them because you deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Raboyas. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Hairston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the City Council, I too rise in support of this, and I just want to say thank you. I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart on behalf of the residents of the 5th Ward, who we all know are very nice, calm, cool, and collected at all times. But I thank you for your patience. I thank you for your wisdom, and not just in how you executed things over the years, but also in how you saw value in those people and those employees that worked and helped to promote women within the department. I think that's very, very key. That had not been done in such a way before you. I want to thank you for giving this lady what she wants and making that be the priority of the department. I want to thank you for making it so that I didn't have to call you all the time, that you had a competent and able staff that could get things done. So I just want to thank you for your service. We will miss you. Nobody really understands the time commitment that it takes to be a good public servant, so I thank your family for their patience, and I wish you the best. Congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman Hairston. The chair recognizes Alderman Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. John, we've been friends for 25 years. Thank you. Thank you for everything. Lisa, thank you. Madison, thank you. Mike, welcome. John, you've been a great commissioner, a great commissioner, and a great Chicagoan. Volunteer at St. Semperosa for all those years, volunteer baseball coach. Proud to call you a friend. I wish you nothing but the best in your retirement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Quinn. The chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with this. Commissioner, there's only so many ways you can say thank you and so many ways that you can say you're a tremendous leader. So I just want to say on behalf of the residents of the 3rd Ward, we thank you for your service to the city. Thank you for the great work you've done in Streets and Sanitation, and although you have a calm exterior, I recall you the pit bull in the Streets and Sanitation Department. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Metz.
Thank you, Madam President. Commissioner, I have one way to say thank you, gracias. Appreciate all the work that you've done in supporting 37 Ward. I can just remember that snowstorm that we just came through, but long before that because as I'm a product from Streets and Sand, I know the hard work that men's and women's putting in dearly, and for you to have overseen that operation have truly been a blessing to all of us. Someone mentioned, my colleagues said, "Streets and Sand can make you or break you." And yes, it can. I want you to know that the family needs you as well. You have to know when to hold and know when to fold, and I think that your folding time has come, but I'm sure they have a honey-do list, so don't you forget that snow have to still be shivered. And I'm sure that the wife and the family is going to make sure you remember. And I'm sure that the wife and their family is gonna make sure you remember that legacy that you left with the city. They want you to carry it out at home now. So thank you so much. God bless you, and you continue to live and love and do all those happy things. Because now you can put all that in one place as at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Metz. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much. Also rise in support of this resolution. I did owe everything that my colleagues have said. John, you have been a gentleman. Appreciate all of the years that you dedicated your life to the city of Chicago. Thank your family for allowing you to work for us. Thank you for understanding people. You know, in a lot of these jobs, it doesn't take PhD to know how to work with people. Whenever I would call you about something in relationship to my ward, you cut straight to the chase. No matter what the situation is, you figure out a way of making it work. And you say, "Don't worry about it, Alderman. I take care of it. I can walk away rest assured that it was taken care of." So I just want to thank you for everything you've done for the 27th Ward. And also, you should be commended for all of the other people that you have helped around the state of Illinois who are not Aldermen with their careers. You've done an enormous job. You have been a dedicated person inside City Hall and outside City Hall. I commend you on all of the great work that you have done. Congratulations and enjoy your vacation, or not your vacation, enjoy your retirement and enjoy your family. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning, members of the City Council. John, I too would be remiss if I did not join in the chorus singing your praises on behalf of the 15th Ward residents. I want to say that when I first ran, I believed that customer service had to be brought into public service. And you have exemplified that to the T. There wasn't a problem that you pushed off on someone else. There was every problem you handled to its resolution. And I appreciate you for that. And you inspired and empowered people to do the same, which is a mark of a true great leader. I do want to, though, disagree politely with the Alderwoman of the 37th Ward. I think you've earned your due not to have to shovel your own snow at home in retirement. You have done your service to the city, and hopefully your daughter will pick up the slack for you. But wish you all of the best on behalf of my residents and look forward to seeing you on the southwest side. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The Chair recognizes Alderman LaPalaTano. Can we turn his microphone on, please? Maybe come forward to one of the other ones.
Appreciate the time and service you put in the city of Chicago. I think the best part about this right now is the time and effort and dedication you put into your job. Your family gets to see how appreciative we are here in the council, as well as the city of Chicago, for what you've done. Enjoy your retirement. Godspeed. God bless. Enjoy your time with your family. Appreciate all you've done for us. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Madam President.
LaPalaTano. The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley. And folks, let me just say, there's a long list of folks who wish to speak to this resolution, which I think is a great testament to the Commissioner. And just ask your patience. I've got your names, and we will get to you. Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand in support of this resolution. Just want to say thank you, Commissioner Tully. My experience with you is that you've always been a commensurate professional. Unlike some Commissioners over the years, you've never been a show horse, but always a workhorse. And I think each of the comments I've heard so far today from my colleagues, you make each of us feel like we're getting special attention from you. And I can tell you, that is a unique talent. And it speaks to the amount of work you've done here with us in collaboration. Now, my experience with you is that you're the antithesis of a typical bureaucrat. You're a problem solver. Rather than shift blame or point fingers or blame the code or the state of Illinois or the federal government, your attitude was always, "Let's get it done." And we're gonna miss that greatly in Streets and Sanitation and in general here at the city of Chicago. So I just want to say thank you for your many years of service. And I do hope that you enjoy your retirement and that they don't keep you too busy doing the yard work and shoveling the snow. Take care, Commissioner, and good luck.
Thank you, Alderman Riley. The Chair recognizes Alderman Smith.
Commissioner Tully, I want to say thank you for leading a wonderful bunch of folks in Streets and Sand. You have come up through the ranks and have really contributed to making this a proud and very productive organization. So please enjoy your retirement and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore, I wonder if you can just lift it up a little bit and speak more directly into it. Great. Folks, can we please turn on Alderman Moore's microphone? Problem solved. Perfect.
I'll go to Michael Jackson route and use the mic. Lisa and I already had that conversation about those honeydews out in the hallway. So, and Tony said, Tully said, hey, he's not doing that work. Somebody, and you earned that to do it. First of all, proactive, not reactive. There are many people you have to just reach out to constantly to try to get something done. But anytime you would see me and sometimes not see me, just call. Just call and say, "How's everything going out there? Do you need anything?" That is more than money. That means that somebody truly cares, and you have proven that. Anytime, as everybody else said, when they call you, you were there. And you demonstrated it by teaching your staff that as well, that we didn't always have to call you. If you got the call, that means somebody else dropped the ball, and that wasn't a lot. So that means you've leaving us with some great people. And that's a testament to what you've done. The last thing I'll say I've learned in life, it's good to leave while people still want you on your own terms and not pushing you out the door. That is the best way to leave. And you have done that, and you're doing that, and it's just so exciting. I'm happy for your daughter who's going off to college so she won't have to shovel that snow. And just thank you for all that you've done. Enjoy this retirement. And still, I want your number, though, just in case I need to ask some questions about, you know, this, that, and the other. But it won't be a lot. But I appreciate you so much. Thank you. And thank you to your wife for being a great teacher to our students.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. Commissioner, in my tenure here, I've served up under four Commissioners. Commissioner Sanchez, Bacardi, Burns, Williams, and you. Out of all of those Commissioners, you were the one Commissioner that wasn't an office Commissioner. You came out to the community, especially doing our cleaning green. And for the times that you came to the far south side in '34, we appreciate you. For your retirement, Alderman O'Shea and a couple others was trying to get you to stay a little bit longer. I wish they had convinced you. But I know that your wife said, "Oh, no, you've done enough. It is time to come and shovel our snow, cut our grass, and not have to pay somebody else to do it." But for the time that you have been here and I've had an opportunity to serve with you, I am most grateful for your friendship. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Austin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardness.
Thank you, Madam President. I too joined this resolution. A great Commissioner, and I'm just a good Commissioner, a great family man. We all thank you for your hard work. So effective that whenever I called, somebody got back to me right away. And it would say, "Alderman, Commissioner Tully just asked me to call you. And by the way, feel free to call me directly. Here's my cellphone, my home phone number. I'd give you a beeper if I had one." Because she just told me, and was very adamant, that I'd get back to you right away, and wanted things done. Not sure what you said to these two folks, but they knew that they had to react and get things done quickly, which shows your leadership. So I appreciate that. Know you also as a friend, have come and friends as well. I know you're gonna do phenomenal on the outside. And I know I'm gonna see you maybe at a Bears game, maybe at a Sox game, a Sodser at heart. So thank you, and God bless and your family as well.
Thank you, Alderman Cardness. Next up, Chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. I too support this resolution. John, it's obviously 50 people here really appreciate you. I've only known you for 10 years, unlike my colleague Alderman Quinn that's known you for 25 years, but it was a great 10 years. I don't think I ever called you because I was upset about something. I had a problem. I don't, things were always done. It seems like most of the time I called you, I just called you to talk and BS about things. But just appreciate your friendship. I appreciate your leadership, the great job you did. Everybody loves you. My work super loved you. You know, the district superintendent, you're just an awesome individual. You just got things done. You made people like me look really good. And I appreciate, on behalf of the 38th Ward and myself, I appreciate everything you did for us. God bless you and your family, and have a great retirement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato. The Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too rise in support of this resolution. Commissioner Tully, John, if you knew this room liked you so much, maybe you wouldn't be leaving. I just wanted to say on behalf of the 50,000-plus residents of the Fighting 19th Ward, I really appreciate all your strong leadership and your hard work. So many things have been said describing your work ethic and the person you are. I know what a toll it's taken on you and the dedicated work you put in. I hope that you now have a chance to spend more time with your family and relax. Because Lord knows you've earned it. May God bless you and your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Shea. The Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this resolution. John, first of all, I'm sorry that I can't be with you on this special day in person, but you know I'm right down the street. I appreciate the hard work you put in, our many, many, many years of friendship and your leadership. I've worked with you before I came onto the department, during my tenure with the department, and we're still great friends now. I kind of mimic you because you are so graceful and has been. All the years that I know you, you're very graceful under pressure. And I try to be like that every day. I'm not gonna say goodbye. I'm gonna say, "See you later," because I know Lisa's gonna buy you that big, brand-new 50-foot boat, and I'll see you on the boat. And I really appreciate your friendship. Thank you so much for being a great leader. And I'll see you soon. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Curtis. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam President. I also rise to be associated with this resolution. Commissioner Tully, clearly from our colleagues, we all want you to know how much you're valued, being someone newer to the council and seeing what you've done just in the past two years when we've had to deal with Hurricane DeRijo, when you had to lead a team through COVID and try to get them to still deliver the amount of services that people feel. Often, when people think about government, they see what we do on the headlines, but they actually feel the work that you do when it comes to cleaning up everything. And so I wanted to thank you for your service and wanted to let you know that as this council and as a member of this council, we will continue to work to make sure that the department is funded, that it continues to grow, so that your leadership is celebrated, but also continued, so that people can really understand how great Chicago is. I want to thank you and hope that you get every opportunity to get the rest you deserve. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Vasquez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I just have a couple things to say. Thank you so much for your dedication and your leadership. Not only were you an amazing Commissioner, but you are an amazing human being. Thank you to your family for sharing you with us. And now go out and enjoy your grandbaby. So congratulations. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Alderman Garza. The Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to congratulate John, Commissioner Tully, and just say thank you on behalf of the residents of the 48th Ward. All of us here who are in our communities day to day have called you on weekends, called you at night when trees are down, when problems happen. And every time, you got it done. You found a way to get it done, and it made a huge difference for all of our communities. Every part of the city's been impacted by you in a positive way. So want to join all of us in just saying congratulations on your retirement. Next snow season, I hope you're somewhere warm, but God bless.
Thank you, Alderman Osterman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. I too enthusiastically rise in support of this resolution to Commissioner Tully. First of all, let me just say that I had a lot of things written down, and I was gonna accept the St. Rita thing, but the St. Semperosa, I might have a hard time now with being so kind, but that's a whole long, old story. And as far as your snow shoveling, you know, I'm sure that if you call the 13th Ward based on your age and your recent injury, they'll send somebody over to shovel for you. But seriously, I want to thank you. You're a terrific public servant. You know what's important to our residents because you're out there. You've talked to residents. You didn't spend time in the office, but you know people, and you can deal with people. And that made you even more effective. You were responsive. We appreciate everything you've done for us in the 11th Ward. I also think you're a credit to your family. I have a sign in my ward office, a quote from President Lincoln that says, "I like to see a man proud of the place in which he lives. I like to see a man live so that his place will be proud of him." On behalf of the residents of the 11th Ward, we're very proud of you, John. Thank you and good luck in your retirement.
Thank you, Alderman Thompson. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. John, thank you for your compassion and your desire to serve our beautiful city. And I say beautiful city because it's due in large part to all the work that men and women do in Streets and Sanitation. You obviously dedicated many years to your craft, as many of my colleagues have noted today. Most admirably, you did it the right way. You came from the bottom. You worked your way up from the bottom. And the men and women in the Streets and Sanitation knew that and respected that about you. So most importantly, you were respected not only downtown, but on the men and women on the streets and in the alleys. And that was your greatest asset. On behalf of all the residents of the 45th Ward, John, thank you for your dedication. Thank you. You make Chicagoans proud to be proud of a part of a working-class town. So thank you very much. I wish you all the very best, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you, Alderman Gardner. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. And Commissioner, thank you for all of your work. Thank you for just being, really understanding the role that we have out in the community. I know that you don't have to worry about certain things because of where you live, but you always, when we called, was there and understood and worked to get the resources that we need in a lot of the communities that are challenged throughout our city. So I just wanted to really just say thank you for all of your work, all of your time, all of your care, and all of your concern. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Tony.
John, I just wanted to say thank you and highlight a couple of things that maybe some of my colleagues haven't done. Number one, I didn't know you were from St. Semperosa. So I know we might have played football together. I'm a Tommy Moore guy, so our roots are from the same neck of the woods, so to speak. But that being said, I'm a Northsider, and... But that being said, I'm a Northsider and I have believed that a clean neighborhood is a safe neighborhood. So, your department has done a great job, but it's your leadership and the style that you present yourself that I think people are attracted to. And then I'll end by thanking you from, on behalf of the residents of the 44th Ward. But I do want to highlight the, the parades and the World Series and all the events. I wish I could take photos of the before, the 3:00 AM after the Pride Parade. And what filth and disgust is there and how by 7:00 AM, not even that, 5:00 AM, we're done. You're out there. Your people are doing their job. And I'm out there with you. You know that. But it is that kind of determination with the department. It's not just you. You know, graffiti is another example. Under Mayor Daley, graffiti was, you know, unheard of in, in his discipline and it's carried through to the administration. So, I end with thanking you and knowing that not only you've kept the city clean, it's you've kept the city safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tony. Any other members of the body who wish to speak to this resolution? So, John, you and I've had our, our private moment. I want to uplift a couple of things that the members have said. They called you a gentleman, a problem solver, incredibly responsive, and that you've built a great team. I agree with all those things. I, I decided I would spare you and your family of the story when we first met. But what I can say is from day one of me becoming mayor, you've been nothing but an incredible team player. All of the infrastructure departments touch our city in many profound ways, but probably none more so than the Streets and Sand Department. You're out there. Your people are out there on the front line and I think the men and women of this department have proven themselves to be true public servants by being out there every single day, not taking a day off, not having the luxury of remote working and truly define what we mean as essential workers. Through thick and thin, rain, snow, sleet, hail, you all have been fearless in your work and have really served the city well. You leave an incredible legacy of service and accomplishment and I hope that you're proud. We return you to your wife, Lisa, and your lovely family. I see from the crutch that you've been a little busy since you left, but we wish you all the best. Good health, long life, and happy retirement. Thank you so much. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, communications. Madam Clerk.
A series of communications from our honor, the mayor, to the honorable City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance to climate-based I L P for affordable housing development. Favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinance authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreements with the Chicago Board of Education to provide TIF funding for various school improvements. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. At the request, ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of up to $32 million in tax-exempt housing revenue bonds for the Lake Park Crescent Housing Development Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance amending the 71st and Stony Island TIF redevelopment plan. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Department of Aviation, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of concession agreements for various services at Chicago-Hare International Airport. Favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Aviation. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Budget Director, I transmit here with a Fund 925 Amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinance authorizing a favorable tax status for specified properties located in the city. Favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a multifamily loan agreement with Historic Lawson Partners L P for the rehabilitation of Lawson House. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a multifamily loan agreement with Inglewood Phase I LLC and associated sales to the owned properties. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of the owned property to Podair Learning Center. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with ordinance authorizing the sale of the owned properties. Favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Assets Information and Services, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a renewal lease agreement with Chicago 103rd Street LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Assets Information and Services, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended lease agreement with Heartland International Health Center. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of open space impact fees for a new turf field and running track at Taucat Fine Arts and Museum Academy. Your favorite, favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Transportation, I transmit here and/or, transmit here with an ordinance amending Chapter 10-21 of Municipal Code Regarding Underground Facilities Damage Prevention. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Transportation in Public Way. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Municipal Code Regarding Cannabis-Related Establishments. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Buildings, I transmit here with an ordinance amending the mechanical and building provisions of Municipal Code. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the Chicago Public Library Board. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the Community Development Commission. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the Board of Trustees of Community College District Number 508. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Education and Child Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the Board of Ethics. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the Chicago Housing Authority Board. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the Advisory Council on Veterans. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to Chicago Park District. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to Chicago Plan Commission. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. I, City Clerk Anna Valencia, hereby inform the City Council that the following documents are filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. Office of Inspector General's Public Safety Section Evaluation Report Regarding Demographic Impacts of Chicago Police Department's Hiring Process. Office of Inspector General's Follow-Up Audit in Chicago Law Income Housing Trust Funds Management of Housing Inspections for Units Participating in a Rental Subsidy Program. Office of the Inspector General's Follow-Up to October 2020 Audit Report Regarding Department of Human Resources Management and City Employee Evaluation Process. Office Inspector General's Audit Report Regarding Classification of Ward Superintendent as Shackman Exempt Title, Office Inspector General's Quarterly Report for Period Ended June 30, 2021, An Expression of Opposition to Propose Zoning Reclassification of Property at 12701 South Halsted Street. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on June 25, 2021, were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on July 21, 2021, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal Proceedings of the City Council, City of Chicago. I also inform the City Council that the call for special meeting and the matters considered by the City Council on July 2, 2021, were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on July 21, 2021, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of the Proceedings of the City Council, City of Chicago. I, City Clerk Valencia, also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications reports requiring City Council action, zoning reclassification of particular areas which are referred to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, claims against the City of Chicago which are referred to Committee on Finance. Recommendation by Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Approval of Permit Application for Demolish of Non-Contributing Building at 513 West Florton Parkway in Mid-North Landmark District which is referred to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards and Amendment of Municipal Code Title 17 by Reclassifying the Area Shown on Map Number 9-H at 3840 North Lincoln Avenue which is referred to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Your Honor, that concludes Mayor and Clerk's communication.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move passage of the resolution for Commissioner Tully into the omnibus.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Now I move to return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. Hearing no objection, so ordered. Next up, committee reports. The Chair recognizes Chairman Wagasback for the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met on July 19, 2021. Item number one is a communication authorizing the Amendment of Municipal Code Sections 2-32-520 and 2-32-525 regarding city investment policy provisions. This item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by a roll-call vote.
Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
Aye.
Alderman Laspada is an aye. Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins is an aye. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman Dow is an aye. Alderman King. Alderman King is an aye. Alderman Harrison. Alderman Harrison is an aye. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is an aye. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Beal is an aye. Alderman Zlowski Garza. Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson is an aye. Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness is an aye. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn is an aye. Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alm Burke is an aye. Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez is an aye. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman is an aye. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an aye. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea is an aye. Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor is an aye. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is an aye. Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez is an aye. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an aye. Alderman Tito Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Tito Lopez is an aye. Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado is an aye. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is an aye. Alderman Irvin.
Aye.
Alderman Irvin is an aye. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is an aye. Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas is an aye. Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is an aye. Alderman Wagasback.
Aye.
Alderman Wagasback is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is an aye. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Austin is an aye. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is an aye. Alderman Viegas. Alderman Metz.
Aye.
Alderman Metz is an aye. Alderman Spazado.
Nick Spazado's an aye.
Alderman Spazado is an aye. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent is an aye. Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez is an aye. Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Napolitano is an aye. Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Riley is an aye. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Smith is an aye. Alderman Tony.
Aye.
Alderman Tony is an aye. Alderman Gardner.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner is an aye. Alderman Capelman.
Aye.
Alderman Capelman is an aye. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Martin is an aye. Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman is an aye. Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon is an aye. Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein is an aye. Alderman Zlowski Garza is an aye.
The ayes are 49, the nays are zero. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration is denied. Chairman Wagasback.
Madam President, item number two is a communication authorizing the Amendment of Municipal Code Section 3-56-041 to extend the reduced-term wheel tax licenses pilot program until July 31, 2022. This item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by this first, most favorable roll-call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number three is a communication evidencing intent to issue multifamily housing revenue bonds for RS Roosevelt Square 3B project to RS Affordable 1 LLC, LR Development Company LLC, for rehabilitation and new construction on C H A properties located at 1002 South Racine Avenue, 1257 West Roosevelt Road, 1357 West Roosevelt Road, 908 to 919 South Ada Street, 1306 West Taylor Street, and other various properties located in the 25th and 28th wards. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first, most favorable roll-call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number four is an ordinance authorizing the amendment and enlargement of Chicago Enterprise Zone Number One, conditioned on state approval of modification. This item received favorable approval by the committee and if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first, most favorable roll-call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
And item number five is an ordinance authorizing the Bronzeville Lakefront Infrastructure Agreement with Grit Chicago LLC for city-owned public improvements, including a park along East 31st Street, East 31st Street on the former Michael Reese Hospital campus. This item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first, most favorable roll-call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Madam President, item number six is regarding monthly settlements through the Law Department and this will be placed on file with the clerk.
So ordered.
Items seven and eight consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city and denials of payments of various small claims against the city. If there's no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item nine consists of one order, one order authorizing a tag-day permit for the Knights of Columbus Illinois State Council. If there's no objection, I ask that these items be, this item be- If there's no objection, I ask that these items be, this item be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item ten consists of three orders authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute settlement agreements. And on item 1A, Hudson versus City of Chicago, this is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement agreement in this case, let's see, Tembrasha Hudson versus City of Chicago and Officer Sean Heitz cited as 16 CV 4452 and the amount of $1.2 million. The item did receive favorable approval by the committee with, pardon me, several, I had some no votes, but if I could, I would ask that the members please raise their hand.
Chairman Waguespack, I suggest that we do a roll call vote, and we can record, people record their.
I had, I actually had a list, but I think I see a couple other hands up, so we'll roll call.
Madam Clerk. And can you just repeat the item that we're voting on so members are clear?
Pardon?
Chairman Waguespack, can we, can you repeat the items that we're voting on so members are clear?
Right.
There are three items.
So for colleagues, we had item 10A, 10B, and 10C. The first item, even though we presented slightly out of order, this first item is Hudson, or I believe some of you might have known it as Lowry versus City of Chicago in the amount of 1.2 million. The second item, item 1B, separate vote, was Yower versus City of Chicago. And the third was the Jane Doe case versus City of Chicago and William Whitley. So the first one is Hudson or Lowry versus City of Chicago.
The roll call vote that's been called, but the Chair will recognize Alderman Lopez and then Alderman Urban. Alderman Lopez, that's a.
Thank you, Madam President. If I may offer, if we could just have roll calls on A and B, I think item C was pretty much unanimous, so I don't think we need on that one.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Urban.
My question was, were we just doing A or A, B, and C?
We're going to do them in, in order, not, not together. So the first one is Hudson, also known, I think, as Pierre Lowry case.
So all three, three separate roll calls?
Three separate.
Very well, thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Laspada is an aye. Alderman Hopkins.
Aye, on 10A.
Alderman Hopkins is an aye. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman Dow is an aye. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King is an aye. Alderman Harrison.
Aye.
Alderman Harrison is an aye. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is an aye. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Beal is an aye. Alderman Zlowski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Zlowski Garza is an aye. Alderman Thompson.
No.
Alderman Thompson is a no. Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness is an aye. Alderman Quinn.
No.
Alderman Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman is an aye. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis.
No.
Alderman Curtis is a no. Alderman O'Shea.
No.
Alderman O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderman Taylor is an aye. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is an aye. Alderman Tabarez.
No.
Alderman Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an aye. Alderman Tito Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Tito Lopez is an aye. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is an aye. Alderman Urban.
Aye.
Alderman Urban is an aye. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is an aye. Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas is an aye. Alderman Cardona.
No.
Alderman Cardona is a no. Alderman Waguespack.
Aye.
Alderman Waguespack is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is an aye. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Austin is an aye. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Be, oh, he's not here. Alderman Metz. Alderman Metz is an aye. Alderman Spisato.
Spisato's a no.
Spisato is a no. Alderman Nugent.
No.
Alderman Nugent is a no. Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez is an aye. Alderman Napolitano.
No.
Alderman Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley.
No.
Alderman Riley is a no. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Smith is an aye. Alderman Tunny.
Aye.
Alderman Tunny is an aye. Alderman no. Or, sorry, Alderman Gardner.
No.
Totally, totally not what I meant. Alderman Gardner.
You got it.
Okay.
Is it no?
Alderman Gardner's no. Alderman Kappelman.
Aye.
Alderman Kappelman is an aye. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Martin is an aye. Alderman Ostromin.
Aye.
Alderman Ostromin is an aye. Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Haddon is an aye. Alderman Silverstein.
No.
Alderman Silverstein is no. Alderman Maldonado?
Aye.
Anyone else I missed?
Thirty-four.
The ayes are thirty-four, the nays are fourteen. The motion carries. Alderman Mitchell on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, move for the motion to reconsider that last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Waguespack, back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Item 1B is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement agreement in the case of Yower McGregor as independent administrator of the estate of Shawn Yower versus City of Chicago, cited as 16 CV 4956 and the amount of $400,000. Favorable approval by the committee, but if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move for a roll call vote. Unless someone wants to.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Laspada is an aye. Alderman Hopkins.
Aye, on B.
Alderman Hopkins is an aye. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman Dow is an aye. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King is an aye. Alderman Harrison.
Aye.
Alderman Harrison is an aye. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Sawyer is an aye. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Beal is an aye. Alderman Zlowski Garza.
Aye.
Zlowski Garza is an aye. Alderman Thompson.
No.
Thompson is a no. Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness is an aye. Alderman Quinn.
No.
Alderman Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke.
No.
Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez.
No.
Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Coleman is an aye. Alderman Curtis.
No.
Curtis is a no. Alderman O'Shea.
No.
O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is an aye. Alderman Tabarez.
No.
Alderman Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an aye. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is an aye. Alderman Urban.
Aye.
Alderman Urban is an aye. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is an aye. Alderman Napolitano.
No.
Alderman Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley.
No.
Alderman Riley is a no. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Smith is an aye. Alderman Tunny.
Aye.
Alderman Tunny is an aye. Alderman no. Or, sorry, Alderman Gardner.
No.
Totally, totally not what I meant. Alderman Gardner.
You got it.
Okay.
Is it no?
Alderman Gardner's no. Alderman Kappelman.
Aye.
Alderman Kappelman is an aye. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Martin is an aye. Alderman Ostromin.
Aye.
Alderman Ostromin is an aye. Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Haddon is an aye. Alderman Silverstein.
No.
Alderman Silverstein is no. Alderman Maldonado?
Aye.
Anyone else I missed?
Thirty-four.
The ayes are thirty-four, the nays are fourteen. The motion carries. Alderman Mitchell on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, move for the motion to reconsider that last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. You're 0 for 2. Next up, Chairman Waguespack.
Thank you, Madam President. Item 1C is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement agreement in the case of Jane Doe versus City of Chicago and William Whitley cited as 19 CV 7375 and the amount of $300,000. This item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Madam President, this concludes the report of the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Chairman Waguespack. Next up, Committee on Budget and Government Operations, Chairman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which held a meeting on July 15, 2021, and reconvened meeting on July 16, 2021. The Committee recommends passage of the following items. Number one, an ordinance concerning amending municipal code 2-14-076 and 9-4-010 regarding remote administrative adjudication hearings. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe that there were two roll call votes in the Finance Committee on Settlements, and I would like to be recorded as also voting aye on the first roll call vote for the first settlement. Thank you.
So reflected, thank you. There's a motion by the Budget Committee hearing. No objection, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number two, an ordinance concerning an amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Chicago and the County of Cook regarding the Sheriff's Work Alternative Program that are known as SWAP and the Renew Program. Number one, an ordinance concerning amendment amending municipal code two dash fourteen dash oh seven six and nine dash four dash zero one zero regarding remote administrative adjudication hearings. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you Madam President. I believe that there were two roll call votes in the Finance Committee on settlements, and I would like to be recorded as also voting aye on the first roll call vote for the first settlement. Thank you.
So reflected, thank you. There's a motion by the Budget Committee hearing, no objection, so ordered.
Thank you Madam President. Item number two, an ordinance concerning an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Chicago and the County of Cook regarding the Sheriff's Work Alternative Program that are known as SWAP and the Renew Program. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
A substitute ordinance, number three, a substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to the annual appropriation ordinance year twenty twenty-one within Fund number nine two five for the Office of the Mayor, the Department of Housing, the Department of Public Health, the Department of Family and Support Services, and the Department of Streets and Sanitation, including the Department of Transportation. With the exception of Alderman David Moore, who would like to be recorded as a no vote, I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Alderman Moore's no vote will be reflected in the message, in the record, hearing no further objections, so ordered.
Item number four, an ordinance introduced by Alderman Harry Osterman, forty-eighth Ward, approving the transfer of funds within the City Council Committee on Housing and Real Estate for the year twenty twenty-one. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you Chairman Dow. Next up, the Committee on Committees and Rules, Chairman Harris.
Thank you Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Committees Rules, which met on Tuesday, July twentieth, twenty twenty-one at three P M., the Committee recommends the following re-referrals. Item two is an amendment of the municipal code Title One by adding a new chapter title, Chapter one dash twenty-six entitled Chicago COVID Program Relief Ordinance. The Committee recommends that this item be re-referred to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. I move approval of this recommendation by the first most favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item three is an amendment to the municipal code Title Nine by adding Chapter nine dash one oh three entitled scooter sharing. The Committee recommends that this item be re-referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. I move approval of the recommendation by the re-referral of to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way by the same motion if there's no objections.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you Chairman Harris. Next up, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, Vice Chair Mitchell.
Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. On July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, the Committee held a virtual meeting and recommends passage of the following items. Items one through nine are a series of appointments and reappointments to various special service areas. These items are voted, were voted on collectively. Appointment of David M. Scora as member of S S A nineteen Howard Street Commission. Reappointment of Irene M. Bermudez as member of the S S A number twenty-four Clark Street Commission. Appointments of Michael A. Shuba and Laura N. McMahon as members of S S A number twenty-seven West Lakeview Commission. Appointment of Linda D. Young as member of S S A forty-two Seventy-first Stony Island Commission. Reappointments of Kreshma Ali and Andrew S. Levine Levin as members of S S A number sixty Albany Park Commission. Appointment of James A. Nurse as member of S S A's number sixty-one Hyde Park Commission. And appointment of Stanley R. Rasney as member of S S A number seventy-five Oak Street Commission. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item ten on the agenda is an ordinance in support of Class C tax status for a property located at two twenty-one North Wood Street. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item, item eleven on the agenda is an ordinance in the support of a Class L tax incentive for properties located at two oh eight South LaSalle Street, the former Continental and Commercial National Bank Building. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you Alderman Mitchell. Next up, the Committee on Public Safety, Chairman Talia Pharoah.
Thank you Madam President and members of City Council, reporting for your Committee on Public Safety for which a meeting was held on July sixteen, twenty twenty-one and reconvened on July twentieth, twenty twenty-one. There were two items on the agenda for which the Committee recommends passage. Item number one was the appointment of Nanette Dorley as member of the Chicago Police Board. I moved, I recommend the passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Finance and a associated unsuccessful motion for reconsideration.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you Madam President. Item number two was the amendment of municipal code Title Two by adding new chapters two dash eight zero entitled Community Commission for Public Safety and Accountability and amending Chapter two dash seven eight and two dash eight four. Madam President, if there's any members of the Council wishing to speak on this matter, I'd like to reserve your right to close.
Any members of the body wish to speak to this matter? The Chair recognizes Alderman Carlos Rosa.
Madam President, it's been a long, long journey to get to the point where we as a City Council are voting on this ordinance here today. It's a journey decades in the making. It was black leaders decades ago who first called for community control of the police in response to the misconduct that they were witnessing in their communities. It was most recently after the tragic murder of Laquan McDonald and the subsequent cover-up by this city, that that movement for community control of the police and civilian oversight was revitalized. As thousands of people took to the streets, from that movement was born an ordinance called the Civilian Police Accountability Council. And shortly thereafter was born another ordinance, also rooted in the grassroots, also rooted in struggle, from the Grassroots Alliance for Police Accountability. So many people, including those like our mayor who were involved in the task force, have been working towards creating civilian oversight for this city. And sometimes we were at odds, but we came together because we knew that our city had to get something right. Because we knew that our city had to take action to ensure that people in every single community feel safe, that they are safe. Because safety is a human right, and no one should be afraid of violence, whether it be violence perpetrated by another citizen or perpetrated by those who are tasked to protect and serve them. This ordinance is not defunding the police. This ordinance will not abolish the police, is not abolishing the police. This ordinance is predicated upon a belief that when you empower our communities, that when you give them a real seat at the table and you give them a real voice, that we can make our policing system better and we can have a safer city in every single neighborhood and every single street. This ordinance is predicated on a belief that if we empower people from the south side and the west side and from the north side, that if we empower young people, that if we empower those that have been directly impacted by racist and broken policing and give them the ability to nominate the police superintendent, give them the ability to take a vote of no confidence when they feel that police superintendent has failed, give them the ability to hire the COPA administrator, give them the ability to set C P D policy and COPA policy and police board policy. It's predicated on the belief that if we empower our communities to have a real say in policing, we'll be a better city. We'll be able to take a step towards having the public safety and justice that all of us need. I want to thank the grassroots for fighting, for never giving up, for staying in the streets. Even this weekend, as we were negotiating the final details on this ordinance as before you today, they were still out there knocking doors. They were still out there organizing in the streets. This is your victory today. And while I wish that we would have been further along in police reform and that this ordinance would be stronger, we should be proud. Because this is a strong, transformative, and robust ordinance. Because this is a balanced ordinance. I want to thank Mayor Lightfoot. I want to thank my co-sponsors of this ordinance, Alderman Harry Osterman, Alderman Rod Sawyer. I want to thank Alderwoman Leslie Harrison. I want to thank the Chair of our Progressive Caucus, Sophia King. I want to thank our former Chairman of the Latino Caucus, Roberto Malonado, the Chair of the Black Caucus, Jason Irvin. I want to thank some of my colleagues in the Progressive Caucus like Matt Martin and Andre Vasquez and Jeanette Taylor. It took a village to get us here. And I hope that we can come together today, vote to enact this ordinance, bring community voice into policing in the City of Chicago, and work collectively towards a day where we don't see our young people like Laquan McDonald and Adam Toledo shot in the streets. This is a step forward for justice in the City of Chicago, and I hope that we will vote yes today to enact this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman Rosa. The Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you Madam President and members of the Council. Today is a long-awaited historic day for our city in bringing the community into the forefront when it comes to public safety. The ordinance before us is a compromise ordinance that is balanced, that has taken years to put together. All fifty aldermen that are here, wherever you will land on this and however you will vote, you had an impact on it. And it's important that we had this ordinance, it's a balanced ordinance, where there are checks and balances. All of us in this body care deeply about public safety. All of us care about making sure that our police officers are well-trained and doing right by citizens of the City of Chicago. But we are here today after the death of Laquan McDonald, after DOJ investigation and consent decree that we will live under for a decade, after the Task Force for Police Accountability. When those reforms were put into place, we as a, as a council acknowledged the need for reform, and we created the Deputy Inspector General's Office, and we got rid of I P R and we created COPA. And at that time, we all pledged and said that we needed civilian oversight of the Chicago Police Department. Former Chairman of the Public Safety Committee had hearings around the City of Chicago, where citizens from all parts of the city demanded that and wanted that. And they wanted it because they want to re-establish and rebuild trust between communities and the police. We as a city cannot have safety, true safety in every neighborhood unless there is trust between residents and the police. The violence that we see every day, there's a byproduct of that lack of trust and lack of people wanting to call and work with the police. So this ordinance before you is one that there's checks and balances on. Some have said that our role in the council will be abdicated by this. I will tell you that that's absolutely not true. We are very much involved throughout this process. We will vote on C P D's budget. We will confirm an interim commission. We will confirm the members who would be nominated to sit on the commission. Our role is not going to go away. We have a significant role, as we should, to make sure that our city is safe. But the key part about this ordinance is that for the first time, it brings the community into a civilian oversight role that is desperately needed, so that residents can trust in the policies put forth by C P D. And additionally, there are roles where we elect district council members who will work in each district to help promote safety, to promote community policing, to bridge the gap that we have that's there. This is long overdue, and for us to begin to move forward as a city on safety in every single community, this is an important ordinance that we need to enact and a reform that we need to enact. I want to thank everyone who was involved in this. I will tell you that this discussion has shown how people feel about safety. The sponsors of this ordinance have respected every single voice that's been heard on this. Regardless of how we vote today, we want safety in our city, but I will tell you that we can't get there without the community at the forefront. We have to agree to that and commit to that, and that's what this ordinance will do. I ask all of us to be unified as a council to support this, as an important reform and a important step forward. I ask you to vote on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman Osterman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sawyer.
Thank you Madam President. I too rise in support of this. I've been working on this with, along with Harry and Carlos and Leslie for many, many years, and even though we were taking different paths to this, we were on the same journey. We were all going towards some type of resolution as it relates to the community in regards to the police. I've had a lot of conversations with people over the years regarding this, and what I will say is this. I was watching a docudrama the other day about the framers of our country, and the conversations were similar to the conversations that we were having now. A lot of people were concerned about having too much involvement by regular people. But let's face it, folks, democracy is messy. It's messy for a reason, because we want and we desire the average person to be involved in all levels of what we do. And because of that, we've come with a, an ordinance today that puts ordinary people having great involvement in what goes on with our police interactions. We need these everyday individuals to work with us to combat crime. And when I say this, police don't solve, don't fight crime, they solve crime, they apprehend criminals. The problem that we're having now is that there's a disconnect between the police and our communities as it relates to solving crimes. In order for us to get back to that, we have to get the community involved. So with this ordinance, we believe this takes a strong step with re-engaging, resetting our relationships between the community and the police. I want to thank everybody that was involved. Whether you vote for this today or not, your involvement was critical and crucial to us framing what we have here today. I really want to thank my partner in this, in this journey, Harry Osterman. When we first got involved in this many years ago, I told the Gap Coalition that we could not do it without a diverse presence, and I'll forever be grateful to Harry Osterman for agreeing to take this crazy ride on it. And Carlos and Leslie, you all, everybody knows how I feel about Leslie Harrison, one of my best friends ever, and Carlos has been someone that has really stepped up to the plate and brought some sanity to our negotiations, especially over the last weekend. I want to thank the administration. Mayor Lightfoot, your involvement getting in this was crucial to getting us to where we are today. I want to make sure that we all understand that it took all of us to get here, and we want to always remember, we don't want to sacrifice the perfect and the good for the perfect. So, you know, we want to make sure that you understand this is a great ordinance. I think that once we pass this, and I'm confident and very confident that we will do this today, we will have the most effective police reform ordinance in the country. But it's going to take us to implement it, it's going to take all involved, on-hand, on-deck approach. Please, let us do this so that we can move our city forward, we can combat crime the way we're supposed to do it, and restore, reinstate the relationship between the community and the police. I urge your yes vote on this ordinance. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you Alderman Sawyer. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you Madam President. Here we go. Okay, I'm not the one who set people off, so I didn't plan on speaking, Madam President. Just plan on a simple no vote. But yet, somebody has to set me off and attack the police and accuse the police of murder once again. Adam Toledo was not murdered. It's a tragic incident what happened, okay? We don't need police reform, we need family reform. Families need to start taking ownership and watching after their children, protecting their communities. We can't be blaming the police for everything. We already have eleven oversights that I see, and I'm going to read them off to you. A G, body cameras, consent decree, COPA, DOJ, FBI, I A D, I G, Illinois Torture Board, Police Board, State's Attorney, Supervisors, and if you want to talk about community involvement, we can include DAC and CAPS, all right? So, we're talking about, no, we don't want to defund the police, but that's in essence what we're doing here, all right? The most recent sign up for this most recent police test is a measly twenty-nine hundred people. We have a history of getting half of the people take the test that sign up, so twenty-nine hundred really means fifteen hundred are going to take it. So we don't need to defund the police, we just need to keep putting oversight on the police and make police not wanting this job, afraid to do their job. So that's in essence what we're doing here. So, you're going to get your votes, you're going to, you're going to maybe get fifteen noes, I'll certainly be one of them, and, and certainly, I respect many of the people that were part of this, I consider you good friends, I can't say all, as you know, but I don't agree with it, I don't agree the way it came down. I know you've been working on this four, five, ten, twenty, fifty years, whatever you want to say. Bottom line is, we got this, we got a phone book of information on Monday morning, they waited to vote it on Tuesday afternoon, and now we're voting on it in council. So, I think it's wrong, I'm not going to D N P it, so don't get all nervous, everybody. You're going to, you're going to win, I'm going to lose, the police are going to lose, and the city's going to lose. With that, that's all I have to say, Madam President. Thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to speak.
Thank you Alderman Spazato. Chair recognizes Alderman Baskins.
Thank you Madam President. I'm going to contain myself. I appreciate our colleague naming the number of groups that are providing or attempting to provide oversight for the police. I'd say when you've got that, many of those organizations all saying the same thing, the city should listen. I'm someone who, before coming to council or even thinking about running for office, was out in the streets because we needed to have more police oversight. I was someone who got arrested before I was eighteen, who was racially profiled, and first learned about CPAC from visiting St. High School when the city was having meetings to talk about police oversight. That is where I first learned about the Civilian Police Accountability Council, and it's what drove me to be in the streets along with so many others, so that we could see the change that we wanted to see in, in this world, knowing the lives that we've had to live here. Because I wanted to learn about it, as I was moving forward as a community organizer, I also joined CAPS and became a civilian facilitator. I was on a DAC as well, and what I learned even in being in that role is that police officers recognized that they needed oversight and faith, because, I have faith in the institution, because often we aim our frustration at police when their job is only to enforce. They don't write the laws. That's us here in this council. So part of my organizing to get to this office was to make sure that I could have a voice and work to make that change. In coming to the council, I met the Grassroots Alliance for Police Accountability and learned about their legislation and recognized that there was an overwhelming chorus of voices that recognized that over a hundred years of police violence and a hundred years of police misconduct, change needed to happen. I feel a certain frustration, we have members of the council here who vote no on oversight or don't show up, but yet when the settlements are here, they'll vote no on those, knowing that month after month, we keep doling out money because the system doesn't work. Millions of dollars, one point two million plus more millions on top of that, over eight hundred million dollars in the last decade that are taxpayer dollars that are wasted time and time again because you don't work on institution that clearly needs to be fixed. When there was a special meeting that this council called to have the superintendent come speak about police, he was asked by our colleague about oversight. He agreed, there is a lot of oversight in place. He was also asked, do you believe that we need more oversight? And he said, yes, that if any officer on the force now doesn't believe that reform is needed, they shouldn't be on the force. Because it doesn't matter whether you have a badge on or not, criminal is criminal and wrong is wrong. And what we were working here to do, what took a lot of us coming together, having conversations with people who we didn't agree with, is what we understood is we needed to fix this system to make it better, to actually provide public safety, not just talk about it, not do anything about it, and then vote and continue these settlements. Some of us got voted in and got elected to do something, and I am really proud of everyone here that came together to talk, even those of us who didn't agree on perspective. I want to thank you and your team, because through negotiation, we were able to come to agreement there and establish something that makes our city better and our city safer. Is it going to fix everything? No. But it's a step in the right direction, it is transformative, and is what we need to do for our city. You want police to be able to solve investigations in a better manner or more efficiently, then you need communities to have enough trust in them to give them the information that allows them to solve crimes. That does not happen when we don't have faith in that institution, and we all agree there's a problem, there's a federal consent decree on it, there are so many things that constantly we're being told we need to fix. So I appreciate that people don't agree, I appreciate that in a democracy, people can vote no, but let's not misrepresent and say that those who are in support of fixing an institution are not for public safety. I'd argue that those who want to stay and do nothing and continue status quo aren't for public safety. So I would urge my colleagues who are on the fence and have not decided yet to join us to make our city better, rather than just stand aside as it continues to get worse. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Good afternoon, and thank you Madam President, members of the City Council. I rise in support of this ordinance. Six years ago, I think almost, I think I was a co-sponsor to both CPAC and GAPAM. Not necessarily because I believed that either one was better than the other, but I believe that they both deserve a chance to be heard by this body. I believe that we had to try something different. And now more than ever, being someone who is arguably very much about safety and security and supportive of law enforcement, I see the need for something different. It's not incongruous to say, God bless our first responders, and God bless those advocates who stood up for accountability in the same sentence. They are not oil and water, they are one and the same. They are those trying to defend the City of Chicago during some of the most darkest times that we have on our streets. Accountability is not a loss, it's not the end of policing, in my opinion. For me, this is about restoring the legitimacy of law enforcement when something goes wrong in our neighborhoods, when something goes wrong on our homes, so that when the truth and the investigation is finished, our officers are no longer second-guessed because they are part of a process that everyone deems a failure. The conspiracy and the cover-ups. The conspiracy and the cover-ups are what are hurting our officers the most. The lack of faith in what they do, the second guessing by everyone because of the system that exists now is eroding their ability to be the heroes in the communities that we know they are. That is why I'm supporting this effort. I believe that this will turn out to be a step in the right direction for the restoration of their legitimacy in our neighborhoods. I believe that we will look back on this one day and say, isn't it crazy how we fought against it, but it turned out to be so positive for the city of Chicago? Many of the same arguments that we're talking about today have been used when we discussed body cams. Officers at the time did not want them, members in here said we don't necessarily need them. Organizations, liberal organizations were, let's get them out there, everybody. Now, our officers love them because they show the truth and totality of what they do. This will be another transformative effort for law enforcement. And I think, as we're moving forward, it cannot be forgotten that after nearly 16 months of delay, the unintended consequences was that both of those two ordinances that I co-sponsored and still questioned years ago merged into something far better than I think any of us could have imagined. The unintended consequences of delay was that we have a more perfect ordinance than where we all started. I urge all of you to consider voting for this item. And I urge those in law enforcement watching us today and who will hear us later, to know that this is meant not as an attack on you, and take it from someone who has never attacked our officers for what they do. This is meant as an opportunity for us to start fresh, to start anew, to start on the right path towards re-energizing your legitimacy in our neighborhoods, so that there's no longer a doubt when you do your job. And I ask all of you to join us in that effort. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you very much. I'm very proud to stand in support of this ordinance today because, to me, it creates two things that are beyond objection, which is democracy and accountability. We are helping our community come into having a stronger voice, a direct voice in the systems, the policies that create safety over their communities. And I think, I look around this room, I see all folks who champion democracy in their wards. I am on a daily basis jealous of what I see a lot of you doing to create direct democracy and participation in your wards. And it creates accountability, which is beautiful, because I don't know anyone who can succeed at a difficult job without accountability. I know that I will never become the older person that I hope to be without the accountability of my peers in my community. And it is inarguably a difficult job to be a police officer, a sergeant, a lieutenant, a commander. I think anyone who wants to be great at that work welcomes accountability, and that's why I see no losers, only winners in the work that we're doing today. And I would finally say that I know that we, there's movements behind this work, and movements are made above individuals. While you can never name anyone, I just want to say Marla, Adam, Tamara, Frank, Desmond, Melinda, we see you, we honor you with this work. In a friendlier, healthier time, you would be sitting here with us today, but I'm grateful for you. And we are setting up a system of democracy that needs you and your neighbors in our communities to breathe life into it. That is what democracy is, and so we're counting on you. But I'm so grateful for this moment, and Madam Mayor, I'm grateful for your leadership and your participation and your collaboration to get us to this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Spazado. The Chair recognizes Alderman first.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council. I too rise in support of this ordinance. I would first like to thank, no tears for me today, I would like to thank Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Osterman, and Alderman Carlos Ramirez Rosa for your continued support. I would like to thank Chairman Chris Taliaferro, who, while we don't always see eye to eye, I think he knows where I stand and I know where he stands, and so it has been tumultuous, but we have gotten there. And Mayor, thank you, and especially your team, that I say has worked incredibly hard, not just these past 16 months, but really this last week when, you know, all hands on deck, everybody, all times of day, so they were wonderful, and thank you for your leadership. I guess the question that I have, or that most people have, and I thought about this yesterday after the hearing, is we seem to be questioning whether we got here or how we got here, or why are we here? And so, as somebody that's been here not as long as Kerry or Alderman Burke, but I've been here for a little bit, I want to kind of talk about how we got here. And, you know, I'm sure some of the comments and some of the comments that I heard yesterday was that we have too much police oversight. I believe we talked, we've got 11 organizations, 12 organizations, and if that were true, and let's just say that it is true, and if they worked, we wouldn't be here, we would not having to be, have to be taking these steps. Existing oversight structures have done very little to advance police accountability in this city. They were created this way. Many will tell you that we already have policies and procedures, I heard this yesterday, in place to address this, and we may, but we failed to act. While the Police Board has the power to implement policy, historically, they have failed to do so. I've heard people yesterday say that they're willing to talk about change and work towards changing police oversight, but we haven't. Even with videos by the community and body cameras, we have failed to make meaningful progress in transparency and accountability between the police and the people who are most vulnerable. CAPS was intended to foster this relationship between the people and the community. Over the years, it has continuously fallen short. While CAPS has expanded its budget and positions, there have been very little accomplished in terms of results and better relationships. It yields very little for our communities. IPRA allowed a portion of the police force to abuse Chicago residents with little to no consequence or accountability for their actions. The public lost trust. Community oversight is not a new concept. Some might know it as collaboration. As a matter of fact, we, the City Council, are taking steps that were recommended in the federal consent decree. Why was there a federal consent decree? Because our police department had and has a pattern and practice of abusing and violating people's rights. This is how we got here. Let me repeat, this is how we got here. If we had been compliant with the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the state of Illinois, we might not be here. If our police department had respected the rights of the people of Chicago and delivered police services in a manner that respected the rights of the people they serve, built trust between the officers and the communities they serve, and promoted community and officer safety, we would not be here. But we are. Years ago, when this council found itself faced with problems, lack of accountability, lack of reporting and transparency within the police department, and mistrust within the community, the council created a new acronym acronym to address the situation. When we didn't create a new system of addressing it, COPA was created. Part of the agreement when COPA was created, was that there would be civilian oversight component to further the goals of transparency and accountability, to build trust between the police and the communities that they served. That did not happen. They wrote the rules, they broke the rules, and then rewrote the rules, all biased against the communities that they serve. We wouldn't need these rules if there has not been racism in the department, where black people have been passed over for promotion, had taken tests that were skewed against them, taunted and called out of their names, subjected to working with those who were openly hostile to people who did not look like them, witnessing illegal tactics and being threatened with retaliation, witnessing cover-ups and friends and family promotions, this list goes on and on. We keep talking like the consent decree is just an observation and not a decree, or that we don't have to make things happen according to the decree, or that the decree didn't document or was not based on documentation and affirmed the atrocities, atrocities committed by the Chicago Police Department. Over the years, and maybe today, we will hear or have heard many people talk about this ordinance creating more bureaucracy and more cost. What is more costly than a life or the hundreds of millions of dollars this city has paid in settlements and verdicts? The bureaucracy that I speak of was created by the abuses and abusers of the rules and the system that protected them. The money and the cost we pay now are the money and costs that we should have been investing in our communities but failed to do so. That's why we're not getting ahead of crime. This is how we got here. Anytime this council begins to talk about righting the wrongs of the past, be it racism, disinvestment, housing, education, jobs, the conversation always turns to costs and budgets. That's a diversionary tactic and a way to say, keep the status quo. This prevents us as a city from moving forward, and when we fail to fully fund investments in communities that need them the most and rationalize reasons not to invest in them, why do we scratch our heads when they fail? We set them up to fail, and no more. We are bringing in the light. This is how we got here. We have been talking about community oversight for years. It was not until 2016 when we had irrefutable evidence that the truth could not be denied. We talked about the independent civilian monitor, the police oversight omnibus, the community oversight board, the independent citizen investigator, and no adoption of any of it by the City Council. This is how we got here. Now is the time, I recognize that this ordinance will not fix every aspect of policing in this city, nor is it that, nor is that its intent. It does, however, address the institutional issues that existing bodies have failed to address and facilitate accountability and build the public's trust and improve safety throughout the entire city. The people most affected now have a role to play in police oversight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Hairston. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sicchar Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I wasn't planning on speaking either, but I think that there are some comments that need to be addressed. First, let me thank the GAAPAM and the CPAC coalitions, as well as the legislators who have worked to make this compromise happen. And compromises require us on both ends to understand the dire situation for accountability. It is very clear, and I think one of my colleagues alluded to this case and when I referred to this, as illustrates the need for police accountability. So I would like to remind our colleagues about the facts on the Adam Toledo case. The fact is that there was a police report that was incorrect and lied about the age of a 13-year-old. The fact is that there was a mother who for 48 hours did not even know what happened to her child. Those are the facts, and those facts are uncomfortable, but those are facts that are real in our community. I am speaking, I am speaking, sir, and I'm speaking with facts.
But let me, let me intercede for one second. Thus far, we've had a very civilized debate. It's my hope and expectation that that will continue. This is not about call and response to members talking to each other. We are here and we should lift up this conversation. This is an historic, important moment for our city. Let me remind everyone here. So please, ladies and gentlemen, let's make sure that the commentary, the discussion and the debate is worthy of this moment. This is not about attacking each other, it can't be, and I will not allow that to happen as the presiding chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as I continue.
Please, sir.
And it's important that, as we mentioned, to look at the facts when we make decisions. This is not about attacks, this is about making sure that facts and evidence guides our decisions and our policies. That's what I want to illustrate this case, because the fact is that a 13-year-old child died because of a police bullet. And the investigation should show us what happened there. What is clear, it is that in our council, we constantly talk about accountability, but yet our actions have not reflected that. I think the norm should be zero murders from police action in our communities. We gotta lead with example. Zero indictments should be the norm in this council, because we gotta lead by example. And in the city of Chicago, we cannot continue to operate without accountability. There should not be one single public institution that operates without accountability, because the results are for the public to see. It is imperative that we operate with best practices and the truth and the facts. And the fact of the matter, it is the Chicago Police Department needs to be held accountable as any other public institution, and that's a fact. It is time after time when we see the issues with Janice Young and the many other cases. For us to talk about public safety, it is to talk about accountability. There is indeed a historic day, and this is a compromise. I may disagree with some of my colleagues, to be a national model, I think there's a long way to go. I think CPAC would have been the model that would have set especially a model across the country, but this is a compromise and a first, a first step in the right direction. In my community, I had at least seven murders in the last few weeks, and despite the rhetoric from the superintendent to talk about just give me a call, it's three weeks later, I'm still waiting for that call. The need for accountability, the need for answers, the need to improve the clearance rates, the need to make sure that our communities are safe, requires to step to the moment. And the moment is now. The moment is with your vote, so that we can keep our communities safe. The moment is with your vote, so that we can keep our communities safe. That's what I'm raising support, and I urge your colleagues to think of our constituents when we make our decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President and members today. This is a, one of those interesting debates, and it clearly shows us the differences in our city. If you live 60-something-hundred north, 60-something-hundred west, your life is different than folks that live west side, south side. You live 111 south and 40-hundred west, your life is not the same that a lot of individuals in other parts of our city see. And I say this, and I say this as a, as a son of a 30-year veteran of the police department, that there needs to be some better interaction with our communities and our police department. Now, everything may not be what both sides want, and that's very clear, because this this ordinance has taken many turns and many changes. And as Joe Moore would always say, we should not let perfect, good be the, whatever he said, y'all know what he said. But perfect be the enemy of the good. Thank you, Ms. Sawyer. But I would, I would just encourage everyone to think about not your box, because in this council, we get very siloed into our box, my war, my this, my that. But to think about all of our city, think about the fact that Byron had seven homicides in the last couple of weeks. I had over 20. Some of you had zero. So understand where people are coming from when we talk about change, talk about community. They say riot is the voice of unheard. And so again, we have to think about it in a global sense, because this is not just about your box. This is not just about your community, because if Garfield Park is better, Chicago is better. If Roseland is better, Chicago is better. And let's think about how we can make Chicago better, because at the rate we're going, you're next. You're next. You will not enjoy the safety that you enjoy. You will be next, and we have to figure out a way to bring people together. We should not be having conversations about divisiveness, about how this is going to make the police do less. We should be encouraging our police department to be one with the citizens, as they live here with us too, or should be. So we need to figure out how we can take this effort of accountability, this reform or the other 11 points that someone brought up earlier, and as long as people are doing their jobs, being good stewards, doing positive things in the community, we need to return our department back to a community-facing organization. Kids in my neighborhoods' first interaction with the police should not be on the hood of a car, should be in a community setting, and we need proper people working, community involvement, because sometimes, and we need to understand this, that police department may not see it in that way, but it's up to us as policymakers to let them know that, hey, this is where we need to move, and where our exempt members need to be moving the direction of our, of our officers and our supervisors and everyone, because again, you can't, you don't have enough police to deal with if the community decides to uprise in such a way that it makes the police department ineffective. So again, I would encourage everyone to just take a step back and not just look at their box, but to look at the city in its entirety and what this would do to help bridge the gap that definitely appears in some neighborhoods. And let's not, let's not believe that this is the magic bullet that's going to cure all everything. This is a step in the direction that we've been trying to go since the Somerdale scandal, and we can go year after year from Somerdale to Austin to Marquette to Byrds to SOS and continue going. But again, let's think about how we can make this work for all of Chicago. This is not an attack on the Chicago Police Department. This is a building block of the Chicago community, and let's look at it that way. And I would encourage everyone, I know we have some people that may not support this, but I encourage everyone, really, to vote yes on this, because this will send a clear message, not only to our department, but to our community, that we want to work together. I have no awe or animosity against any of our colleagues. We may disagree on issues, but this is something I think that we all need to be together on, because public safety is the municipality's primary goal and responsibility. So let's try to walk together on this, let's move together as a city on this, let's put aside our differences, and let's walk as one on this matter. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. Like many of my colleagues, I was not really planning on speaking, but as my colleague just said, public safety is our number one concern. I know that's the number one concern of the constituents in the 11th Ward, constituents I hear all around the city. And as I said in committee yesterday, I commend those that have worked hard on this ordinance for all of their work and efforts. But just as my colleagues have said, a vote for this ordinance is not a vote against police reform or against the police. A vote against this ordinance is not a vote against reform. We can have different structures. I, as I said yesterday, I believe we have a structure in place. We have a police board that has the authority for adopting rules and regulations for the governance of the police department. They also vet, as you know, Madam President, you were the chair of that, the nominations for those superintendents. Yes, the city council does have an initial say in the initial commission, but after that, it's a new elected body that will make the selections. They pick the nominating committee, so it's another elected government, another elected official, and who says they're going to be different? We don't know. We don't know who those district members will be, council members will be, but they will then have the ability to select the commission members. So I'm opposed not to reform, because I think, I know in my community, they're looking for us not to create more government, but to help with public safety and help with the day-to-day issues that we face in the city of Chicago. I think this ordinance, and again, I commend my colleagues, I think it creates some uncertainty. I think we can do this through reforming, as I've said, the police board, and I do think that we do need more oversight and training, which is outlined in the consent decree, and what we're achieving and trying to do, and I commend the police department and all of those that are involved in trying to implement that. But we just created COPA. We've created other things. We've got to let, give an opportunity for some of these things to take place. The training, we just started implementing last year. We had a pandemic. We haven't had many of our officers go through the police academy. And so as we continue to try to reform, we've got to move swiftly but cautiously and make sure. I don't oppose reform. I just don't think that this ordinance is the best way to handle it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Thompson. Alderman Kapelman.
I rise in support of this ordinance. We're living in a day where we look at facts and we look at perception. At this point in time, perception is taking precedence over facts, and there is a perception among many Chicagoans that they, they don't trust police, and they are screaming for reform. And so if for anything else, this ordinance will tell all Chicagoans that we are serious about real reform and that we are hearing their voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kapelman. The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano, who is speaking from Alderman Lopez's mic.
Thank you, Madam President. I think the term here or the phrase everyone's using is nobody had intent to speak. I think we discussed a lot of this yesterday in committee. I have to tip my hat to Chairman Taliya Farrell. Yesterday's committee was probably by far one of the best that I've been involved with in the last six years here. Everybody knew there was a task at hand. Everybody had a direction they wanted to go, but it was very civil and the conversation was, was spot on. I think everybody knows that there, there needs to be reform. Many of us believe that reform is already in place or is, is, is in the process. Myself, I, I don't believe that we should be pushing another form of oversight. Personally, I love the constant word used here is accountability. I believe that, that word's used constantly when it comes to something like this, because we're taking the opportunity to hold who we believe is accountable for everything, and that seems to be put on the police all the time. Accountability seems to be used on where we know we can control it, and that's on the police department, because it's a department that we have a say over and we can control and change the way they do things by creating another committee. Where we don't put accountability is, is on our communities, all of our communities. 6,700 people shot in the last 18 months. That's where our accountability should be put on, our communities. It has zero accountability. In great conversation, I keep hearing that this is going to play out stronger in other parts of the city and less in, in, in other parts of the city. I got to call BS on that. It's going to have effect on the entire part of the city. And for those of you that say, maybe you don't understand where we're coming from, because you never spent a second on the hood of a car, I call BS on that, because I'm sure a lot of us have spent a second on the hood of the car, but we spent that second because we messed up. Sometimes you're, you're in the wrong place, the wrong time, but you were there because you messed up, and you hold yourself accountable. Happened to me, but I held myself accountable, and I was lucky to have somebody tell me what was right and what was wrong, and raised me properly, and to tell me not to be a part or a contributor to 6,700 people shot in the last 18 months. I hope that this new police oversight acronym works to the best of its ability. I'm praying that you get to that street code of harass or kill, or I should say murder, anybody that wants to give information to the police, because that's the code. That's the code we should be going after. harass, threaten, or murder anybody that talks to the police. This acronym isn't going to make people come out and talk to them anymore. What it's going to do is going to have police officers want to interact just a little bit less, and fear of everything they do will be recorded on this and held in the wrong way, and go to an oversight committee who's going to fire them, sue them, have them lose their house, and destroy their family just for trying to do the police, doing the job as a police officer. My belief is it's only going to get worse, and what I know what we'll be doing here in the next six months is creating another acronym committee to find out why of our, why has our crime tripled? Who is going to be held accountable for this? I just think we all agree that there is a change that needs to be made in policing, but as my colleague has explained, we have those measures set in place. I said this yesterday, and I'll make this brief, I'll cut this short now. I took this test in 1996, 97, with over 20-something thousand possible applicants to be a Chicago police officer. You're now getting less than 3,000. The job has been demonized. This new committee, this 12th layer of police oversight, is going to make every potential wannabe officer think about going in a different direction. And I think that's important for us to understand, because the direction we're going in right now and with the crime in our city is like we've never seen before. So we need to take an opportunity to start after this passes, and you all vote for it, and I do commend you guys and girls and ladies and aldermen and, and, and the chairman that have put the time and effort in this. This was a labor of love, but I hope we could put our efforts towards the important parts of what is happening in those streets, because I have been on the hood of the car, I have seen it firsthand, I know what's out there, I'm not the aficionado of it, but I've been there, and what is going on out there is not, it's not a pretty picture. We're losing it. So I hope the next six months, we put a little bit more time and effort to fixing that out there, and not worrying about if we're going to have enough people telling the police what they're doing right and what they're doing wrong while they're in the middle of a war, a war on our city. So think when you vote, because the second you vote, you are going to change the way the city of Chicago operates, the way the police officers patrol, and what you're going to get out of them. I do know that they do want to be the police. I do know they have the heart to, to combat crime, but the output you're going to get from them will create your next committee. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Napolitano. The chair recognizes Alderman Cardona.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of city council. This is a step in the direction of community safety and much needed change in perception of accountability. First, I think it's important to acknowledge that this ordinance creates a method of democratic accountability through the elections of commissioners. The ardent supporters of police and criminal justice reformers will be, will be able to take their cases to the public, and the voters will set the direction of this board. Second, this is not a, this is not a panacea. I will not change, it will not change the decades of disinvestment in our communities and discriminatory housing policies and criminal justice system that has broken the families and unit in the communities across our city. We need to address this issue, or this ordinance will fail. Again, we need to address this issue, or the ordinance will fail. Finally, to my friends in law enforcement, you are given, you are given the duty to serve and protect our city. You are given an immense right not to afford, afforded by the citizens to discharge this city. This perception of policing is tainted by the acts of miniscule minorities in your ranks and the 99.99% of officers trying to do what is right. The ordinance is, is a change, but I'm confident in the concessions made by the proponent of the final version will give the good, hard-working, rank-and-file members the protection they are needed to improve public perception and gain the cooperation of the communities that they serve. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I obviously support this legislation, and you know, I'm optimistic. I think this is going to go a long way with putting aside doubts about the quest for reform, the guessing game. I think it's going to allow to formalize a process for civilians to really participate in a way that maybe we should have done it from the beginning. I've been talking to folks in the community about volunteering and why should some get paid and what, why others should not, and whether pay is the right way to go, but we'll put that aside and debate it later on. I, I think what's important is that folks recognize that there's a value in volunteering, and that we ought to step and that we ought to step up and we ought to make folks in communities step up and represent their communities. And I agree with what's being said here that, you know, the police are not entirely the problem. We've had, like many other institutions and even here in this body, problems that shall not be discussed for now. But what we know that we've done also some reforms here when it came to ethics and so forth. If it requires and it's a must for us to be able to bring us together and bond on a level that we haven't done before, I'm all for that. People talk about transparency and accountability, whether that's going to get us there and the fact that the police are going to behave differently. And I think that's not even to me the most important part. The most important part is for us to come together, to figure things out because things are not gelling. And I think over the last few years, the people in communities have been fighting for this reform. And of course, then crime has definitely exacerbated because, maybe because of that, but there's other factors. Nevertheless, we have a lot, lot to do here before, after this is passed. And that's to work, start work anew on trying to figure out the crime trends and work with the police department and how to figure that out. But every alderman, every alderman, every district ought to be accountable for their stats and what they could do better and what resources are needed to be able to rein and arrest whatever crime patterns may be developed in those communities. We all deserve to be safe. Every community deserves to be safe. And my colleague Urban said it. We live in different communities and the different outcomes. Because we have different processes and different norms and different things that have just developed over the years in the city. You know, segregation and so forth. So let's just be united on this. This council ought to be looking forward to solving the problems, how to make our city more safe. And this is what it should be about. This is the beginning. And I, the mayor's, you know, I always tell her leadership because she started this with the task force many years ago. And I think coming to a culmination of negotiations on what it should look like, keeping barrel control to me was the winner, is what should be. The accountability stops on the fifth floor. So that's, that's what the accountability part that we talk about. The aldermen should be accountable. The mayor should be accountable. Police should be accountable. Superintendent should be accountable. Those factors have to be weighed in here. And to me, to be able to support that and tell my constituents, formalize process, I'm willing to bet that's going to yield results, maybe not be perfect because we're going to work towards perfected. But I think it's important for us to recognize that this is what this is about. We've got to be united on one thing, making Chicago better. I do agree with my colleagues on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cardenas. The chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, this is, I think this is going to be a pretty good day when it comes to our city of Chicago and when it comes to bringing community to the forefronts of how we get to solving our everyday problems in our society. I want to thank significantly, I want to, I want to really thank those at CPAC and GAPA who've been involved with this for a number of years. I was board chair at the United Congress of Community Religious Organizations when we started talking about police accountability some years ago and the GAPA ordinance came out of that group. So I know all the hard work that's gone on in these two groups and to the legislative heroes that have championed this effort, you are legislative heroes. Carlos, Harry, Rod and Leslie, I just thank you for all your efforts, really human's efforts. I do feel like it is my responsibility to bring the debate back to what has been talked about by a number of my colleagues. You know, one of my colleagues who I call a friend from the North Side brought up the issue of Adam Toledo. And to the point, called it a tragedy. And I want to recognize that. Nick, you called it a tragedy and we all agree on that. And I'm glad you said that because that is the truth of the matter. What is also the truth of the matter is that actually is an important incident for us to really dive into. It's a really nuanced incident. It's a thirteen-year-old kid, a neighbor of mine, lived down the street from me. We didn't shoot at anybody. Let's remember that. But certainly was in a situation that's extremely nuanced. There was a shooting there. But at the end of the day, what this effort improves on, in my humble opinion, is my neighbors' confidence in be able to pick up that phone and call the police and have confidence that the end result will be a good one for our city. That the end result of what's going to happen here is our neighbors are going to be able to rely on our police. And in the way that I agree with Ray, that we're going to have an end effort, an end result that we can all trust in. I think that's what this is about. That's why I'm very favorable towards this effort. I'm so glad that so many people dug in deep. I think there was a, there was a comment earlier by Carlos about the many people who've been involved with this. I want to echo that statement. You know, this type of comprehensive change to the way in which we go about public safety, you can't get there without compromise and without people coming together. So I thank all the legislative heroes on this, the four aforementioned individuals, the mayor and her staff for coming together on this piece of legislation and for the fact that we need to resolve for these tragedies. And I call us to come together and figure things, these things out. I don't want to put blame on any one individual or any entity, but we need to come together to resolve our issues as a society. Thank you, Alderman Urban, for saying what you did. It is very difficult in certain neighborhoods, but it's difficult in all neighborhoods in the city of Chicago. We need to come together to resolve these issues. And I think this piece of legislation does that and that's why I'm so very supportive. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wasn't going to speak on this either, but talking, well, he and everybody talk reminded me of a conversation I was having with my daughter yesterday. I happened to be at home alone yesterday cooking dinner. My wife is on vacation for her birthday and I'm sitting at home cooking dinner while we were having this conversation about public safety. Yeah, no, I was at home having the conversation about public safety with her and she heard all of the conversation that was going on back and forth. And she heard a couple of my colleagues who I look at as, as friends and, you know, know that they're here for the benefit of the city of Chicago and trying to make this city better. And she said to me, you know, I, from what I'm hearing, they sound racist. And I said, honey, you know, one, I know them personally and I understand that, you know, what they're recanting is from their perspective. They're giving a perspective of, you know, how they were raised, the jobs that they were in, the communities that they were raised in. And so, you know, I've, I've been lucky enough to have the benefit to know good officers, to know good legislators, to know good people who I may disagree with. And what I would ask is for those same people to understand the perspective in which I bring. You know, when I was sixteen years old, happened to be able to drive my father's car to the store and come home and, and, you know, doing nothing but the right thing, going to the store for my family, was pulled over and put on the hood of the car. And that was my first interaction with the police department. You know, get out of the car. You don't belong in this car. Who are you? Where's your license? What are you doing? And that has framed my perspective as it relates to police. You know, my entire life until I got into this job and was able to interact with police officers. And see that there are good police officers and understand that there are bad police officers. And so the, the thing that I would ask is, you know, for people who, who may not have had that experience, is to go out to the Garfield Parks or to come to the Long Dales to, to see what, you know, an individual who is a young African-American male who, you know, doesn't have to raise their hand and say, hey, I was in anything bad, to understand that these things happen and they happen because of the system that is set up. And to understand that public safety and reform are not mutually exclusive. They can be done together and that's what this ordinance is, is about. I will say one thing that I agree with, with my colleague from the North Side who said that, you know, we need to dig in as a council about the issue of public safety once this is passed. I would say that and I would say that the coalitions that have come together, the GAPAs, the CPACs, all of these grassroots organizations that have helped us get to this point, would ask them to also step up and help us with public safety. Keep these coalitions together in these neighborhoods and help us move the ball of public safety across the goal line, the way that we're moving the ball of reform across the goal line today. Before I go, I'd like to thank all of the sponsors who have, you know, listened to, you know, countless things. When this first came out, the way it was drafted, you know, was something that many of us cannot support. And appreciate you listening to everybody and their input and making sure that it gets to where it is palatable for everybody. I also want to thank you, Madam Mayor, for, you know, making sure that there is common sense, practicality. You making sure that, you know, whether you're sitting in this seat in four years, eight years, twelve years, that the office and, and the body here still has their hand in this reform. I urge all of you, you know, to think about, again, the perspectives that everybody brings. Thank you for this conversation and I urge everybody's yes vote on this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
The chair recognizes Alderman Metz.
Thank you, Madam President. I spoke last night, but I do want you to know my, my personal experience with this issue was when I came into city council and my colleagues were debating on John Burris and I didn't know who John Burris was. So once I have learned and lately became a victim myself through a family member of thirteen years old, being accused for twenty years locked up and having no oversight whatsoever to even allow parents to come to the jailhouse, coerced, being tortured. I know we need some oversight. And as I was sitting in the courtroom, Coper was there. Didn't know who Coper was, but they were there, more support for these families. And after doing their research, they researched all of these victims. And I became acquainted with their mission. Because at these times, it affect not only my family, but it affects surrounding members, my mother, my nephew's mother, who did not even live to see him being exonerated twenty-five years later. There are so many of young black people and brown, more black than brown, in the jail system right now. Crimes. And you tell me we're not going to do any reform? We're not going to do anything? If something is not working, you got to change what you're doing. And this is, all we're doing is changing it. Society do change. The world change. People make changes and we need to change. And that's all we're looking to do. Now to say what's not going to work, I think it is edible for us to say that because we really don't know what tomorrow going to bring. So how can you say something that you really don't know? I think that we need to have faith that it works because faith is something that you can hope for. But it don't have evidence that you can't see it, but believe it. And I think that we should be looking for our taxpayer, for our citizen, for all that I've seen us pay out to try to do something different. And these some bold, this is a bold moment. Whether we are all for or against, it is a bold moment in history for the city of Chicago right now to take this stand, to look to change all the injusts. And not just for the police because we're not talking all of my bad. I had to learn that part too. Because by the time we got through with those two detectives in the courtroom, I had to rethink my whole perception on the police department because there are good and bad in everybody. Good and bad and your family's good and bad and your children's good and bad and jobs good and bad and the council everywhere. But don't put it on everybody. Judge everybody for themselves. And what we're going to do is this reform going to look to hold people accountable. That's what we want. And trying to make a difference moving forward. We want our police to work together. We want to work with our police. Our community cannot make it without working with the police. We want to build some better bridges. We want to make it better for our young generation who are going into police force to know that they need to understand the community, respect the community and work with the community. So I'm supporting the ordinance because I think and I believe, I have faith that changes are coming. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Metz. The chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I think that the, the argument that this ordinance will attract less candidates to become police officers in this great city of Chicago is completely misguided. I think that, like most police officers, if you feel that you're doing your job professionally, you will not be worried about a new level of oversight. Because they are the first one to recognize that change is needed. Sadly so today, even before we are taking the step with this proposed ordinance, I have heard from some of my constituents that when they call the police for calls of service, they are refusing to come to the site unless there's been a shooting. Is that the way that we're supposed to be feel protected? Is that is what the twelve oversight bodies that we have are working? For police officers now saying, sorry, if there is nobody shot on the street, we're not going out? That is what's happening right now in my community, like I presume in many communities of color. And this has happened to Latino callers asking for, for call for service to the police. Is that right? Is that is what some of my colleagues want to protect? I think that's wrong. If we have twelve oversight bodies, why do we have such a distrust, mistrust by most people of color in this city, adults and young, mistrusting the police? Because those twelve oversight bodies are not working. I have been subject and victim of police profiling. And I do remember clearly, seven years ago, driving back with my two boys in the car at eight-thirty at night from a swimming practice with my oldest, who at the time was thirteen years old. We were stopped by two police officers. Only because when the light turned green, I went around the car in front of me, which is a perfectly legal maneuvering. I was stopped. Twelve blocks further west. And there was one white officer in that car and he tried to yank my driver's door to pull me out. And I refused to do that. And I had my middle one was eight years old, seven years old. That was his first interaction with police in the city of Chicago. My oldest was 13. How do you think that I felt like a father? Being mistreated the ways that I was by that white police officer? And there was a Latino officer next to him who was trying to calm him down. And the white officer refused. I still remember that. That's why I don't trust the police by and large. And I need to hear from some of my colleagues that this is going to be something that our police officers are not going to like? And that we are instead going to be getting less service from them? Those police officers, if they believe that, they should quit being police officers. Because like we have said, they took the pledge to service and protect us. That's not the way to service and protect us. So I think that this is going to be a good thing, and it's a good first step. I have been a sponsor and supporter of CPAC for many, many years. But in the absence of that, I'm fully support this. And I hope that all of the members of this City Council will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Maldonado. Chairman Talia Farrow.
Madam President, I stand in support of this ordinance. And I particularly want to thank our chief sponsors, Chairman Osterman, Chairman Sawyer, Alderman Leslie Harriston, and Alderman Carlos Ramirez Rosas. But I also want to thank the hundreds of Desmond Yanceys out there, the hundreds of Frank Chatmans, and the hundreds of Adam Grosses that have come together to make this a better city. This is a city that they love. A city that they love so much that they have spent several years trying to make it better. And I want to thank you, Mayor, and your administration for working the tireless hours and coming together with the compromise that we could put before this body to bring something better to the city of Chicago in the name of democracy over the last several years. And I don't think anyone is as happy that we're taking a vote on this matter as I am. In the name of democracy, we have had our homes protested. We've had our offices protested. I've had some gigantic sandals, or should I call them flip flops, left at my office, and I couldn't wear them, by the way, so I would love to give them back. We've had thousands of emails that have circulated through all of our email accounts. Our press and our local news media sources have written tons of stories about community oversight. Social media accounts have been created, all in the name of producing a better city of Chicago. I've had some great privileges in my life. I've had the privileges of serving in the United States Marine Corps and serving this country. I've had the privilege of serving with you in this body. But I don't think there's been a greater privilege that I've had outside of having my family and the privilege of serving my God than being able to serve this city as a Chicago police officer. I served honorably for 22 years. And I don't think I've had a greater service than that to be able to help protect the city of Chicago and protect the residents that are in this city. And so I say with all sincerity in front of the bottom of my heart that I love policing and I love being a police officer. In fact, I remember when I was a young teen telling my mom that I wanted to either be a cowboy or a cop. And I knew cowboys weren't in Virginia, so I decided to focus on being a police officer. And I think that has shaped me so much in my life to the better that I certainly understand and I certainly appreciate not only the job itself, but the sacrifices you make as a police officer. But Madam President, I believe this ordinance is one that will make us a better city. For a long time, we have said, and I've said it myself, that we are a world-class city. And I've heard the past administration say, and I've heard each of you have probably said it once or twice, we are a world-class city, but not everyone sees us that way. If you look across the country, they are saying that we are one of the worst cities and don't visit Chicago. They've looked at our police department with disdain. And we have to change that. We have an opportunity to change that, and we have to do it. That's our obligation, that's our responsibility. I get water in my basement sometimes. And believe it or not, it's not because of the city. It's because I got cracks in my foundation. And unless I fix those cracks, I'm going to keep getting water in my basement. And I'm going to keep having to pull carpet out. And I'm going to keep having to pull drywall out until I do what? Until I fix the cracks. We cannot be a world-class city, and we can't be one to say we are reshaping the future of Chicago if we don't fix the cracks. And those cracks are not just with our police department. We got cracks in this council too. We got to get back to having a respectful city council. And so I challenge that as our next goal. But with our Chicago Police Department, if we don't fix the cracks in our Chicago Police Department, we can't claim to reshape the future of this city. It won't happen. And our police department has to be open to that change. I've seen so much on our police department that I'm very proud of. And the men and women that I've served with, one, I'm on the mayor's staff that's in the back of this room. I'm very proud to have served with them. But I've also seen things that I know that needs to be reformed on our department. And if we don't do that, and we don't take these bold steps now, we will be having a future in this city that none of us will be very proud of. So be proud of who you serve, be proud of where you serve, and be proud of being able to make a tough, tough vote to vote in support of something that's going to change this city. So I truly, from the bottom of my heart, want to thank all of you that put in countless hours to make sure that this ordinance is presented here today, and especially for getting it out of the Committee on Public Safety. Your Honor, with that, I move for the passage of this item by roll call vote.
Thank you, Chairman Talia Farrow. I feel compelled, given the moment, to add my voice to this discussion. And let me start by thanking the body for your passion, for your eloquence, and for your ability to compromise in the spirit of doing the right thing for all involved. I know from talking to almost all of you, those who support and those who oppose this ordinance, that no one has come to the decision of the vote that they will cast without being thoughtful and intentional and listening to community. What I've heard today is a council debate that I believe will be one for the ages. That you have weighed in and represented your constituents well. And you've represented the city of Chicago well. So I want to thank you for the tenor and tone and content of the debate. Many of you know that I've devoted a significant portion of my professional career, and really my life, to police reform and accountability. I started this work as a young federal prosecutor, worked hard, hand in glove, with Chicago police officers prosecuting some of the most vicious gangs in this city. Gangster Disciples, the second wave after Larry Hoover and his board were sent off to prison. I know firsthand the harm that can be done in communities by those who create chaos with guns and have no regard for the safety of residents and particularly our children. It is during that time that I first came to work with Chicago police officers. And what I saw of those gang task force officers, many of whom I stay in contact with today, devotion, heroism, and a true commitment to public service. But what I also know is that those same officers grew up in a system where they didn't want to be the guy or gal who reported misconduct, who called out their members when they were wrong and stepped over the line. I also had the privilege of prosecuting corrupt police officers who tarnished their badge and sold their soul and brought dishonor to what I believe is a noble profession and calling, and that's being a police officer. I had the opportunity to serve this city as the chief administrator OPS, the predecessor to COPA, at a time when 40-plus police-involved shootings a year was very commonplace. Something that is unconscionable to think about in this time. I know, having been out in the streets of the city as I was getting to know the harm that can be caused when people don't feel safe but don't believe that the police will be there for them. My work informed the Police Accountability Task Force, which I was honored to lead. On April 13, 2016, we issued our report. It was a sprint, but it was an honor. And we learned a lot from community through that process. One of the things that I will remember most is a young man that we met. He was 17 years old at the time. In his short life, he had had 10-plus encounters with the police, every single one of them humiliating. Bent over a car, put up against a fence, put on the ground. He was a big guy, but he was in tears recounting the trauma that he experienced through those encounters. And I knew that we needed to do something better to change our city because no young man, regardless of his circumstances, the color of his skin, should have to endure something like that because it would stay with him for the rest of his life if he didn't have a countervening positive experience with the police. I also know through that work that the vast majority of our police officers come on the job for the right reasons and stay on the job for the right reasons because they are committed public servants and they love their city. You've heard me say this from this podium before. The police are not our enemy. They are our neighbors. They are our friends, and they have families that they want to go home to every single day and be safe. Yes, I believe we need civilian oversight of our police department. We authored that and made that recommendation in the report. And I want to give a nod to Maurice Clausen, my former chief of staff, who was the architect of that provision of the Police Accountability Task Force. And we intentionally made sure in that document that while we called for civilian oversight, we did not identify the specific form. Why? Because we believed that it was important that we have community voices more than what we were able to gather in the few short months that we operated to be part of that discussion. Little did I know it would take us over six years to get back. But I want you to know of my commitment, not only as the author of that report, but as a person who went to philanthropy and urged them to fund the group that would later become known as GAAPA. I was involved in that. I want you also know that I helped write the original GAAPA ordinance, hand in glove with Adam Gross and others because I believed in it then and I believe in it now. We've come a long way. We've had some stumbles. We've had some disagreements. But ladies and gentlemen, because of the hard work of so many people in this body, people in the advocacy world, we are here on the precipice of making history. I want to say, however, as many have mentioned, this ordinance, should it pass, will not solve all problems. It will not make every challenge that we face in public safety and accountability go away. There is much more work to be done. We're on a path. We've absolutely made progress, but there's much more work to be done. And none of us can outsource our responsibility to get that work done, to continue on the path of reform, to continue doing everything that we can to make our community safe. You've heard me say this before. Public safety is the issue. Not a number of priorities, including public safety. It is the issue. We've made great progress in the city. I'm proud of the way that we've come through the pandemic because of the support and sacrifice of so many. I'm proud of the way that our economy is roaring back, and it is. But if people don't feel safe in their homes, if our babies can't be in their beds without the worry of a bullet coming through the window or the wall, nothing else matters. And we must not lose sight of that. And we must not lose sight of the fact that we cannot continue down a path of demonizing each other, people who don't agree. Chairman Talia Farrow was kind. And let me just say, having spoken to many of you, the device of rhetoric, the attacks at homes and offices, simply must stop. It serves no one. It advances no cause. But what it does is continue to divide us at a time when this city requires us to be united in the work that we do. We cannot demonize our police officers, as I say. Someone said, "Well, we do this, they're going to stop working." They won't. They won't. It'll be hard. We'll have to explain to them to break through the noise and the rhetoric that they're also hearing from certain sources. But legitimacy is key to the work that our police do. If the communities do not trust them because they're not legitimate to them, they will not be effective in their most core mission, which is serving and protecting every single resident of this city. But we dare not paint with such a broad brush. As a person of faith, I know that we are all human. And by God's design, we are all flawed. Let's not forget that. Let's not forget that we also must look inward and think about what we must do every single day to be better and worthy of God's love and support. We are moving forward, I hope, in a momentous way, in a powerful way. But in a way that I hope will bring us together. I don't approach this work from the perspective that we must do something to the police. I approach this work as something that we must do to bring communities together, to help them feel safe. I hope that is the guiding light that animates all of us. If we do that, we will succeed. We will be the better for it, but more importantly, the residents that we have sworn to protect, to represent, will be the better for it. Madam Clerk, I believe there's been a request for a roll call. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the incredible debate today and the discussion. Thanks for all the incredible, hard work that's gone into bringing us to this moment, a moment I think that we will all be proud of for years to come. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Laspada.
Aye.
Alderman Laspada is an aye. Alderman Hopkins.
No.
Hopkins is a no. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Dow is an aye. Alderman King.
Aye.
King is an aye. Alderman Harriston.
Aye.
Harrison is an aye. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Sawyer is an aye. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Beal is a no. Alderman Zloski Garza.
Aye.
Zloski Garza is an aye. Alderman Thompson.
No.
Thompson is a no. Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Cardness is an aye. Alderman Quinn.
No.
Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke.
No.
Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Lopez is an aye. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Coleman is an aye. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Curtis is an aye. Alderman O'Shea.
No.
O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Taylor is an aye. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Brookins is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rodriguez is an aye. Alderman Tavara. Tavara is a no. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Scott is an aye. Alderman Sechel Lopez.
Aye.
Sechel Lopez is an aye. Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Maldonado is an aye. Alderman- Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Burnett is an aye. Alderman Urban.
Aye.
Urban is an aye. Alderman Talia Pharoah.
Aye.
Talia Pharoah is an aye. Alderman Raboyas.
No.
Raboyas is a no. Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Cardona is an aye. Alderman Waguspack.
Aye.
Waguspack is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Yes.
Rodriguez Sanchez is a aye. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Austin is an aye. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Ramirez Rosa is an aye. Alderman Vegas. Alderman Mitz. Alderman Mitz is an aye. Alderman Spisato.
Next, Spisato is a no.
Spisato is a no. Alderman Nugent, no. Alderman Nugent is a no. Alderman Vasquez.
Andre Vasquez is a yes.
Vasquez is a aye. Alderman Napolitano.
No.
Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley.
No.
Riley is a no. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Smith is an aye. Alderman Tunny.
Aye.
Tunny is an aye. Alderman Gardner.
No.
Gardner is a no. Alderman Kappelman.
Aye.
Kappelman is an aye. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Martin is an aye. Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Osterman is an aye. Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Haddon is an aye. Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Silverstein is an aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to sixty-five ILCS five slash three point one dash twenty dash forty. The passage of this ordinance requires a two-thirds vote of all members of the body. Based on the roll call and what that requires, thirty-four positive votes. Based on the roll call, the ayes are thirty-six. The nays are thirteen. The matter passes. For the motion for reconsideration.
This one's about to be hairy, huh? I move reconsideration of that last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion fails. You're now, I think, oh for three. Alderman Mitchell. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for this debate and the vote. All right. Alderman Talia Pharoah.
Who's the report on public safety? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Committee on Housing and Real Estate, Alderman Osterman.
I don't know how to top that, but I'll try. Madam President, members of the City Council reporting for your committee on housing and real estate, which held virtual meetings on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one and July twentieth, twenty twenty-one, the committee has a series of reports. Recommends passage of the following. Item number one is an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District regarding cities acquisition of portion of Durkin Park eighty-four forty-five South Cullen for the water, July Water Supply Project Improvements. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee of Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number two is a lease agreement with All Things Through Christ Outreach Ministries of City-Owned Property at sixty-five thirty-seven South Wood Street for use of a community garden. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number three is a substitute ordinance for a long-term ground lease agreement with associated easement for the Boys and Girls Club proportion of the Joint Public Safety Training Academy Campus on West Chicago Avenue and Costner. I make the same motion if there's no objection, but I believe that Alderwoman Mitz would like to be recognized on this item.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council. As we are making history, this is a history-making moment for the West Side of Chicago. I've been in office for twenty-one years and when I first came in, the first thing I asked for was a youth center for our children. It then took me twenty-one years, but we are here today. Today. Nothing is more important now than ever was before because if you allow me to, we are going to put a Boys and Girls Club right next to our Public Safety Training Academy. It's going to be a state-of-the-art for the city of Chicago. It's going to be an opportunity where those young people who were out celebrating Saturday night, where five of them got shot in my ward. They could have been at that Boys and Girls Club holding their event inside of that space. Since we cannot hold event right next to your own house. An enclosed lot where all five were shot. And I think that it's an opportunity for every boy and girl to be able to have a safe place where parents can take their children and go and teach them. Whereas there are single mothers or single dads out here, somebody has to look out for the kids. And it is our responsibility for everybody to look out for each other's children, no matter what race, creed, or color. We supposed to look out for these children. And if you allow us today to be so graceful. It passed Housing Committee, but I need the support of the full City Council to be a part of this history-making moment for the city of Chicago, helping our children. Thank you, Mayor, for your visionary to come along and see. I remember. I remember that day and you agreed to help and you've done so and we appreciate it. Thank you all very much. Please support this opportunity to help us not just in thirty-seven. West Garfield, Humboldt Park, Austin Community is going to be a better place if you allow us to put this Boys and Girls Club there to help our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mitz. The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to echo what Chairman Mitz said. This has been a long time coming for Chairman Mitz and I want to commend her on her hard work and all that she has done for this Public Safety Academy and making sure that it's not just a Public Safety Academy, but it's an amenity for the entire West Side. With the things that she's built, bringing over there with the sit-down restaurants and now this Boys and Girls Center that will service the entire West Side. She talked about the communities in which they will serve, that is the majority of the entire West Side and to put a new state-of-the-art campus over there, I think will be beneficial for not just the West Side, but the city of Chicago. And I just wanted to stand and congratulate my colleague for all her hard work. This precedes you, but once you got in, you know, the momentum started and you carried it over the finish line. So I want to thank you, Madam Mayor, and I want to again congratulate the chairman on all her hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members who wish to speak?
I too want to commend Chairman Mitz on her perseverance on this. Strong perseverance that will help her community and help young people. And on this day, when we try to bridge the gap between community and police, this is an opportunity to do that as well. So I make the same motion if there's no objection with the exception of Alderman Sidco Lopez, who would like to be recognized as a no.
With that noted, hearing no further objection, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number four is a substitute ordinance repealing and recreating chapter five dash fourteen of the municipal code modifying rent regulation provisions of Keep Chicago Renting Ordinance. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number five is a direct introduction to modify landlord notification requirements out into the COVID eviction protection ordinance. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number six is a multifamily loan financing for Casa Durango LP and Casa Durango GP LLC for affordable housing construction at eighteen fifty dash eighteen fifty-eight South Racine and twenty oh eight, twenty twelve, South Ashland Avenue. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number seven is a loan restructuring agreement to refinance Home Funds Program Loan for Roosevelt Tower One LLC and Eastlake Roosevelt One LLC for senior housing at thirty-four forty West Roosevelt Road. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number eight is a loan restructuring agreement to refinance Home Funds Program Loan for Westridge Senior Partners LP and Westridge Senior, Seniors Corporation for senior housing at sixty-one forty-two North Carolina, North California. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number nine is a loan restructuring agreement to refinance Home Funds Program Loan for Kedzie Partners LP, Kedzie Senior Partners GP LLC and Kedzie Investors LLC for senior housing at forty, forty-five North Kedzie. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item ten is a loan restructuring agreement to refinance Home Funds Program Loan for Eastgate Village Partners LP and Eastgate Village Senior Corporation, Eastgate Village Investors LLC and GA Construction Development, Inc. For acquisition and construction of senior housing at three hundred East Twenty-Sixth Street. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number eleven is a redevelopment agreement with Nath Construction LLC to acquire city lots at six hundred Central Park Avenue, six hundred, six thirty-six North Trumbull, six forty-three North Trumbull, six thirty-nine North Trumbull, six thirty-seven North Trumbull, thirty-four oh one West Fulton, four two eight North Troy, six two five North Christine Avenue, six forty North Trumbull under the City Lots for Working Families Program. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item twelve is the acquisition of various parcels within the Avalon South Shore Redevelopment Project at the intersection of East Seventy-Ninth Street and South Exchange. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item thirteen is the acquisition of vacant property at thirty-six twenty-five West Chicago Avenue with, within Central, Chicago Central Park Redevelopment Project. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item fourteen is the acquisition of the former Pioneer Bank site at four thousand dash four thousand six North, North Avenue and four thousand eight West North Avenue and various parcels, the vacant parcel of the sixteen hundred block of North Pulaski and the provision of tax increment financing assistance for mixed-use development. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item fifteen is a negotiated sale of city-owned property at twelve oh one dash twelve oh five West Sixty-Third Street to the Inner City Muslim Action Network with associated escrow remediation agreement. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item number sixteen is the sale of city-owned property at fifty-one thirty-six dash fifty-one fifty-two South Carpenter Street and fifty-one fifty-six dash fifty-one fifty-eight South Carpenter. The neighbor space for the expansion of Stockyards Community Garden. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Last item before the Housing and Real Estate Committee is item number seventeen, which is the negotiated sale of city-owned property known as the former Michael Reese Hospital Campus to Grit Chicago LLC for the Bronzeville, Nor, Bronzeville Lakefront Mixed Use Project. Alderman Sophia King would like to be recognized on this.
The Chair recognizes Alderman King.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for your leadership on this project. And for your team's commitment, hours and hours of commitment on the Bronzeville Lakefront Development, formerly known as Michael Reese. As you all know, this is a mega development that will truly impact the entire city and of course, the Bronzeville and Douglas community more specifically. While it will bring billions in economic development to the city and community, it will also bring other tangible investments. And while I know you guys have heard about this project ad nauseam over the last few days. I actually had the opportunity to speak on it three times because pieces of it are up in zoning, finance, and housing. I thought I would spare you that and just speak this one time on this development and then share some of the highlights again quickly. I think it's worth going over again so that everybody just understands what this development means, not only to the community, but to the entire city of Chicago. This is a mixed-use and sustainable development, which includes residential, senior buildings, retail, commercial, and open space. The highlights that I've noted throughout the week include twenty percent affordable housing on-site. Good jobs, both long-term and short-term, including construction, professional services, good hospitality jobs. Especially thank you to our partners in labor who fought hard with me for this, specifically Unite Here. We'll also pay homage to the Bronzeville community and to Michael Reese and their histories, their storied histories. A Bronzeville Walking in Center with the Digital Museum will be located in the first building that's built in the ARC Center. Design guidelines, including homage to Bronzeville and Michael Reese in the public space, will be in every subdivision of this development, including at least a twenty-five thousand dollar commitment to that. A fifty cents per square foot impact fee to help pay for the Bronzeville Walking in Center and museum. The operating costs will come from the ARC Center and will pay for the Bronzeville Walking in Center. Intentional inclusion and diversity throughout the development. There's a required thirty percent MBE and ten percent WBE, but there's an overall goal of sixty-five percent diversity. There'll be internships and hours of apprenticeship, apprenticeships per year throughout the development. Twenty-five million dollar commitment towards a new or existing school in the community. A twenty percent write-down on ten percent of all retail and commercial space throughout the development. And of course, quarterly meetings with the Michael Reese Advisory Committee to hold the development team accountable. There were numerous people who worked on this over the past number of years. Countless hours, countless meetings. But I'd like to specifically thank a few people because I think they lived this development along with me. Again, I'd like to thank the mayor for her leadership and her team, represented by Commissioner Cox, Cindy Rubik, who spent countless hours on this, Noah Franzick, Tim Jeffries, and Patrick Murphy. If you guys don't know about Patrick Murphy and the gym that he is in zoning, you better ask somebody. But for all of their work, Commissioner Varral and her team, the Grit Team, represented by Scott Giedman, David Doge, and Jim Reynolds, Chairman Osterman, and Vice Chair Burnett. Vice Chair Burnett helped me so early on about affordable housing and the things that you can do. I just want to acknowledge that during my first year, I don't remember, know if you remember that, you sat me down and said, you know, you can do some of these other things. Chairman Osterman, thank you for your leadership here, especially for listening to the community as it regards to the redevelopment agreement and letting us take our time and make sure that we get this right. But especially I want to thank the Michael Reese Advisory Committee that has been advocating on behalf of its community and working tirelessly to do so. And because of this, I will ask all of you, hopefully, to join me in a favorable vote for this development moving forward. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Alderwoman King. Madam Mayor, I want to commend you and your administration for all the hard work on this significant project for our city and for the South Side. I want to commend Alderwoman King, who has spent countless hours devoted to going line by line with this agreement for the betterment of her community. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Madam President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Osterman. Next up, Committee on License and Consumer Protection, Chairman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council. Reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection, we held a virtual meeting on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. And the following items were passed by the committee. Item number zero two zero two one dash twenty-eight sixty-two. It's an ordinance to amend the municipal code to establish rules and regulations for third-party food delivery service. Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Harris, Alderman Mitz, with Alderman Michelle Smith voting no. I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the License Committee and pass this item by the same roll call vote as item number one of the Committee on Finance Report and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
With the no votes.
With, with Michelle Smith as a no vote.
Hearing no further objections, so ordered.
The next item on this agenda was item number zero two zero two one dash twenty-six oh two. An ordinance to allow a one-time.
An ordinance to allow a one-time exception to the Chicago Cubs to hold a concert at Wrigley Field on September the sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one in the forty-fourth ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Three ordinance regarding restriction, restricted residential zone in the thirteenth and forty-first ward. I move passage of these, this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
We had twelve ordinance regarding moratoriums in the thirtieth, thirty-first, thirty-fifth, thirty-seventh, forty-two, forty-five, forty-eight and the forty-ninth ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Recommended do-not-pass ordinance was item number zero-two zero-two-one dash twenty-eight forty-eight. An ordinance lifting subsection four dash six zero dash zero-two-three, parenthesis two-seven point three-five-nine, parenthesis, in the twenty-eighth ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report for the License Committee. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you Chairman Mitz. Next up, the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Before the committee, there were two hundred and seven items. There were two hundred and five routine items that passed and two routine, routine items that did not pass. There was an ordinance introduced by Mayor Laurie Lightfoot, zero, zero, zero-two, zero-two-one dash two-eight-six-three. An amendment of the municipal code two dash one-four dash one-three-two regarding true owner notification procedures for impounded vehicles that pass. If there's no objections, I move by the passage of these ordinances in the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The matters will be considered in the omnibus. Next up, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, Chairman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting on your Committee for Transportation in Public Way, a meeting which was held on July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The following ordinances were passed by a majority of the members present. Page two through twelve include a hundred and twenty-nine ordinances for grants and privileges introduced by the local aldermen in wards one through two, nine through eleven, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen through twenty-one, twenty-three to twenty-five, twenty-seven through twenty-nine, thirty-one through thirty-four, thirty-seven through forty-seven and fifty. Page thirteen includes five ordinances for canopies introduced by the local aldermen from wards nineteen, forty-two and forty-seven. Page fourteen includes three ordinances for sidewalk cafes introduced by the local aldermen from wards twenty-six, twenty-seven and forty. Pages fifteen through seventeen include twenty-one ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by local aldermen from wards one, five, ten, eleven, twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty-five, forty-one, forty-three and forty-nine. Page eighteen includes one transportation ordinance located in the fortieth ward. Page nineteen includes one subdivision ordinance located in the second ward. Page nineteen includes two vacation ordinance located in the second and twenty-fifth wards. Page nineteen includes three dedication ordinances located in the tenth, twenty-second and forty-fifth wards. If there are no other objections, I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you Chairman Brookins. Last but not least, Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, Chairman Tunney.
Madam President, members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, which held a meeting on July twentieth of two thousand twenty-one. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains document number zero-two zero-two-one dash two-nine-nine-zero. The amendment of municipal code chapter sixteen dash six by modifying various sections and adding new sections, sixteen dash six dash zero-four-five, sixteen dash six zero-five-five and sixteen dash six zero-seven-one to the flood control ordinance. I move passage of this item by the last most favorable call, roll call vote of the Finance Committee and the associated unsuccessful, unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one contains document number zero-two zero-two-one dash two-eight-seven-five. The amendment of municipal code chapter six, table fourteen A dash twelve dash twelve oh six by implementing a cap on late payment penalties on certain unpaid building inspection fees. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Pages one through twelve contain various map amendments in the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, seventh, eighth, fourteenth, nineteenth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, thirty, fifth, thirty-second, thirty-third, thirty-seventh, fortieth, forty-second, forty-third and forty-fourth wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Objection, so ordered.
Page thirteen contains the map amendment for document number zero-two zero-two oh one dash one-nine-three-one for the address commonly known as forty-six hundred Marine Drive. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection, noting that Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Sichu Lopez, Alderman Martin and Alderman Haddon would like to be recorded as voting no on this item.
Those no votes are noted. Hearing no further objections, so ordered.
Pages thirteen through fourteen contain various map amendments in the forty-seventh, forty-eighth and forty-ninth wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page fourteen can, contains the historical landmark designation for the former Schlitz Brewery Tide House at thirteen ninety-three through thirteen ninety-nine West Lake Street in the twenty-seventh ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page fourteen also contains one historical landmark fee waiver in the second ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page fifteen contains various large signs over one hundred square feet in area, twenty-four feet above grade in the seventh, twenty-first, twenty-fifth and forty-second wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you Chairman Tunney.
Madam President, if I, if I can, I would like to suspend the rules for the immediate consideration of a resolution that I submitted to the clerk. If the clerk could read the resolution.
Do you want the entire resolution read or do you want to speak to the resolution?
Actually, since it is a former colleague in his passing, I'd like to read the resolution.
All right. Hearing no objection, the rules will be suspended for immediate consideration of the resolution. Ladies and gentlemen.
Whereas Bernard J. Hanson, a former alderman of the forty-fourth ward, passed away on Sunday, July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And whereas the Chicago City Council has been informed of his passing by Alderman Tom Tunney of the forty-fourth ward. And whereas Bernie was born on November twenty-sixth, nineteen forty-four in Chicago. He attended Hawthorne Elementary, Lane Tech High School and the University of Chicago. And whereas a lifelong resident of Chicago and the Lakeview, Hanson served as a Cook County Sheriff's Deputy and the Forty-fourth Ward Streets and Sanitation Superintendent. And whereas Alderman Hanson was elected to the Chicago City Council in nineteen eighty-three, following the retirement of his mentor, John Merlow, and served until two thousand two overseeing transformational changes to the forty-fourth ward and served as Chair of the Chicago City Council Committee on Economic Development. And whereas Alderman Hanson presided over the installation of lights and the first night game at Wrigley Field in nineteen eighty-eight. He oversaw the Neighborhood Protection Agreement that still controls night activities around the ballpark. A lifelong Chicago Cubs fan, he proudly displayed the Cubs logo in the backyard in Arizona. And whereas Alderman Hanson was one of the City Council's most outspoken and effective supporters of human rights. He was the lead sponsor of the nineteen eighty-eight Human Rights Ordinance, which expanded protection against discrimination in housing and hiring to gays, lesbians and disabled persons. And sponsored an ordinance that provided for protection and assistance for victims of bias-related crimes in Chicago. In nineteen ninety-seven, the City Council, the city of Chicago, passed the ordinance which Hanson introduced that extended healthcare benefits to the domestic partners of gay and lesbian city employees. And whereas in nineteen ninety-eight, Hanson oversaw the North Halsted Streetscape, which included rainbow pylons and street identifiers that cemented Halsted as the LGBT Entertainment District and, and destination. Hanson strongly supported the location of Bonaventure House and the construction of Center on Halsted in the forty-fourth ward. He was an advocate for increasing HIV/AIDS spending in the city. And whereas Bernie was especially proud of his leadership role on the City Council for environmental and recycling legislation, which gave Chicago one of the most aggressive and workable recycling programs in the country. In nineteen ninety-three, the City Council passed the Burke-Hanson Ordinance, which guaranteed recycling opportunities for every resident and business in the city of Chicago. He also sponsored legislation that increased funding for private sector recyclers and led efforts that, to extend Chicago's moratorium on the creation of landfills. Because of these efforts, he was honored by numerous environmental organizations such as Operation Lake Watch. And whereas from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and six, Hanson served as one of four U.S. Commissioners to the Great Lakes Fishery Commission, a presidential-appointed to a bilateral treaty organization which Canada, with Canada, responsible for fisheries management research and recommendations and sea lammery controls for the Great Lakes Fisheries. He served as Vice Chair from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and Chair from two thousand to two thousand and two. He also held the positions of U.S. Section Chair and the Chair of Finance and Administration Committee. And whereas Bernie served as forty-fourth ward Democratic Committeeman from nineteen ninety-two until two thousand and five. He was proud of a strong organization and have mentioned, had mentored many successful leaders and emerged from the forty-fourth ward, including U.S. Congressman Mike Quigley, State Senator Sarah Fagin-Holtz, State Representative Kelly Cassidy, former Senate President John Colleton, Alderman Tom Tunney, Alderman Ariel Reboias and others. And whereas Alderman Hanson is survived by his wife Annette, two sons Paul and David and two granddaughters Carly and Brienne. And whereas throughout his life and career, Bernie Hanson devoted his life, himself to the well-being of the forty-fourth ward, the city of Chicago and its residents. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and members of the City Council of the city of Chicago, assemble this twenty-first day of July, two thousand twenty-one to hereby honor the life and memory of Bernard J. Hanson and extend our heartfelt condolences to his family and friends. And be it further resolved that a suitable copy of this resolution be presented to the family of Bernie Hanson as a sign of our respect and admiration for a lifetime of service to the city of Chicago.
The chair recognizes Alderman Reboias.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I want to thank my colleague from the forty-fourth ward, who actually brought this resolution to being. I hope a family member or two are listening. But I, I want to, we go back many years in the forty-fourth ward. In fact, Carlos Rosa's parents were also members of the forty-fourth ward, along with my family and I, Madam President. When I say the name Bernie Hanson, I think of Senator John Colleton, Sarah Fagan-Holtz, who's a state rep, Congressman Mike Quigley and of course Chairman Tom Tunney. To know Bernie Hanson was to know John Merlow, his predecessor, a person who developed and encouraged all the members in the forty-fourth ward to represent the people, their beliefs and their family members. When my colleague Tom Tunney stated that his wisdom and honor will be missed, but the forty-fourth ward family is strong, thanks to his leadership, is so true. That's where I came from, Madam President, forty-fourth ward, and I will never forget that. And as a former representative in the forty-fourth ward, I remember very well his wife Annette, son David and Paul. In fact, my, my dad was, was a card player with his wife Annette. So we go back a few years and as my colleague Tom Tunney knows, and we will never forget what he did for the community, what he did for the forty-fourth ward, how he represented us. And I think it's important to, to know that and to, to make that known. Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, my colleague Tom Tunney.
Thank you Alderman Reboias. The chair recognizes Alderman Wagasback.
Thanks, Madam President, and thanks Alderman Tunney for bringing this ordinance today for Bernie Hanson. There, I think there are some things we know about him, his work on the Human Rights Ordinance and the things that he did in, in the Lakeview community, which I think are very important and really led the way for a lot of the work that you've done and committed to over the years. So we thank him for that. I also wanted to say, I appreciate his work, continued work in the community, the Lakeview community, long after he retired. And every time he was in town or every time he was in the neighborhood, he would call me up. He would stop by the office, just pop in, always had something to say, always had something to share about how we can make the community better. And I've often appreciated that input. Sometimes it was funny, things that I couldn't do, but it made me think about how to do things a little bit better. And I, I appreciate all that shared knowledge and commitment that he had to the Lakeview community and to our city. So thank you for bringing this, Chairman Tunney and Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman Wagasback. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. I too wanted to rise and just add my voice to this resolution and to thank Alderman Tunney for bringing this before us. You know, you don't, you don't run into too many people who you can honestly say were extremely nice to the core. When I came into this body, Bernie was one of the first people who embraced me and taught me a few things along the way. And he always had stories to tell. And when you're one of the young guys and people are telling stories, you say to yourself, how long he's been around? And now I find myself on the other side of that, being around a while. Now I'm telling stories. But he was always there to, to mentor you and help you and just show you some things that you may not understand and, and show you along the way. When I found out about his passing, me and Tom texted back and forth and, you know, it really resonates when people touch you along the way. And he was just one of those people that really touched you along the way. And so I want to thank Tom again for bringing this resolution. I want to thank his family. And just a genuine, genuinely nice person to the core. And so he will be missed and, you know, there weren't too many mistakes that I can honestly say that Bernie had. But when he retired, the mistake he made, he left us with Tom here to continue his legacy. But in all, in all seriousness, you know, Tom, he was a great guy, a great mentor to us all. And he will be missed and we feel your pain and we're here for you, brother. Thank you so much. God bless you.
Thank you Alderman Beal. The chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to remember Bernie Hanson. Bernie Hanson took pride in being an alderman and he took pride in his community. And he rolled up his sleeves and did all the little things that you need to do to turn a community around and bring people together to turn a community around. It's not rocket science. It's not something that happens overnight. It's hard work, block by block, neighborhood by neighborhood, and he did that. And he did it with a smile. He did it with a laugh. He served with my mother Kathy and together they had lots of laughs together in the council. He was someone who would go to work and be in his office at six o'clock in the morning. So if you wanted to talk to him, you had to call him at six in the morning. A trait that my good friend Tom Tunney has picked up. If you want to see Tom, oftentimes in the spring, he's shoveling gutters with volunteers in his. with volunteers in his ward. But that's what you need to do to be an effective Alderman. It's not speeches, it's hard work in the community. That's what Bernie was all about. And he did it with a smile to his family. He'll be remembered. You know, regarding the Human Rights Ordinance, he brought people together at a time when the gay community still was going through difficulty with coming out. And he brought people together from all sides of that issue to make sure that the Human Rights Ordinance was passed. And it was because of his personality, his ability to bring people together to move our city forward. And he left a great legacy. And to his family, again, thank you, and we think of him and think of you.
Thank you, Alderman Osterman. And the Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I also like to rise in support of this resolution. You know, I had the pleasure of being associated with Bernie for many years, you know, working for George Dunn. Back in the day when him and John Merlow used to hang around and Bernie used to come to the ward meetings. He was always one who would embrace change. Bernie embraced change when change wasn't popular, you know. And the funny thing is, in his community, he had Boyz Town, but he was like, the furthest away from Boyz Town as a man can be, right? But he embraced it, and he nurtured it, and he grew with it. And he was a guy who, who just was a basic person, who just took the job on and did it, you know. I had the opportunity and the young Democrats, you know, some of us and the young Democrats with Sean Hollenan and Stella Black's daughter and a couple of folks who are judges now, who came from Bernie. And you know who I'm talking about. And Bernie, he really embraced those young people. I mean, he was 100% a Democrat with the Cook County Democratic Party. He carried the party flag, but he was more so about his community. He's going to be missed. I used to get calls periodically, Bernie would call me up from Arizona. Hey, what's up, bud? How you doing? You know, and he still was, even though he wasn't an elected Alderman, he still was the Alderman, because he still would call you to help people. He was an Alderman through and through and a community person, and he's going to be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burke.
Thank you, Madam President. Tom Tunney and I were speaking a moment or two ago, trying to count the number of people who are still here that had the privilege of serving with Bernie Hanson. And I think we decided, Tom, did we not, it was either seven or eight? It's hard to grasp, but 20 years have passed since Bernie left the city council. As most of you know, that served with him, he ate, slept, and breathed, being the Alderman and the Committeeman. He was, as Tony Lorino once said, an alley Alderman. And that was not meant to be any detrimental description. It was high praise indeed. Because all of you know that you have to take care of the alleys and the streets and the trees. And that's really what the essence of being an Alderman is. But Bernie was here on some historic days and historic meetings. He was here at 4:02 a.m. on December 2, 1987, when this city council, after the perhaps longest session on record, elected Mayor Sawyer. And Mayor Sawyer stood there and took the oath from Walter Kozbowski, the city clerk, at 4:02 a.m. It was quite a day, but Bernie was, in his own way, a legend. But as Alderman Osterman alluded to in his remarks, I remember very clearly the meeting at which the city council adopted the historic Human Rights Ordinance. Mayor Sawyer was strongly in favor of that. But just like the vote today, that was a tough vote. If it wasn't for Bernie Hanson and Kathy Osterman and the personal relationships that they had forged with other members of this body, that ordinance never would have been adopted. The council was under construction, this room was under construction that day. And so we met in the auditorium of the State of Illinois building in the lower level. But I can remember just like it was yesterday. It's always sad to see a colleague go on to their eternal reward. But I can truthfully say that it was an honor to serve with Bernie Hanson. And he left the world a better place for his service here. May he rest in peace. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Burke. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez-Rosa.
Thank you, Madam President. I never had the opportunity to meet Alderman Bernie Hanson. If I did, I was likely too young to remember. But I always felt good about him, because my parents had nothing but nice things to say about him when he was our Alderman in the 44th Ward. Bernie Hanson was my Alderman when I was born, and he was until the age of 11, when he resigned and paved the way for Alderman Tom Tunney to take the reins in the 44th Ward. But I remember hearing about Bernie Hanson at the dinner table as my parents, longtime Lakeview residents, talked about the work that he did to improve their community. They appreciated him showing up consistently to Lakeview Citizens Council meetings. They appreciated everything that he did to deal with problem buildings, to clean up the streets. And perhaps for that reason, they, along with Alderman Reboias, joined in an organization called Hispanics for Bernie Hanson. And somewhere in my mother's attic, there is a letter with Alderman Reboias's name on there, my parents' name on there, speaking to all of the great and good things that Bernie Hanson had done and why he deserved reelection. So that's truly, I think, a testament to the type of man that he was, that someone like myself, who had never even met him, who didn't really know him, felt the goodness that he and his administration brought to our community and that he brought to the city of Chicago. So I wish his family the deepest condolences, and I stand to also support this resolution in honoring and commemorating his life. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else in the body who wishes to speak? Alderman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. As Alderman Burke alluded to, one of the individuals that had an opportunity to serve with Bernie, I am one of them. I had an opportunity to serve with the three Bs, Bernie Hanson, Bernie Stone, and Burton Nateras. So you know, I got a real lesson. But for, as Alderman Beal said, you could not have met a nicer person, no matter what it was that you were going through or you needed to do. If you asked Bernie, you got a straight answer, now you better do it. Because if he gave you advice, he knew that his advice was going to be beneficial for your constituents. And that's what you were here to serve, your constituents. And for that, I am forever grateful that I had an opportunity to serve with him, but I could also call him a friend. But contrary to what Alderman Beal stated, that Bernie made a mistake, I think he made a good selection with Tom Tunney. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Austin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Harrison.
Thank you. I too rise in support of this. I guess I too was here with the three Bs. And boy, did they take us through it. You know, I guess you could call it hazing, they might akin that to hazing today. But I like to think of it as an education. And so Bernie was always good at pulling me aside. He would always, let me talk to you, and he would tell me something. Yeah, there would be the girly. And but as Alderman Austin said, his advice would be good, and it would be well-intentioned. And you know, he was a little bit ahead of his time, which is where I think he and I found our sweet spot, that his constituency is a little bit like my constituency. So we found things that we could relate to. And even after he retired, we still kept in contact. And he will truly be missed, but he was definitely an asset to this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Harrison. The Chair recognizes Alderman Metz.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to rise in support of this resolution for Alderman Bernie Hanson. So I got to meet Alderman Hanson before I became an Alderman. I used to be a meter maid. So I was up in his area writing parking tickets. And normally, if you're up in his area, he want to know who's writing the tickets in his area. And you know, he want to give you a few tips at the same time. So I had to go in and sit down and felt very welcome. He told me about the community. Not that I know, I never thought that I would get an opportunity to be here. Before he left, I happened to join the council with Alderman Hanson going out. So he was just a genuine, great gentleman, believing in serving the peoples, always made me feel welcome. So I really would like to extend my condolences to the family as well as Alderman Tunney. I mean, I know it's hard for you to have to know your mentor is going on home. And you reached out to let us know that early on, no sooner than it happened. He was texting us, and so I really appreciate receiving that text from you. And naturally, we want to have that feeling for any one of us, because at some point in time, we all going to have to go down that road. So thank you so much, and my prayers are with you. Know that we have your support, we love you, and to the family. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Metz. Chairman Tunney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and my colleagues. A lot's been said, I tried to write it into the resolution. But you can't write some things about Bernie Hanson. We can't even talk about it, because he was a guy who got things done. Don't ask me how we got it done, we get it done, and just get it done. I'll give you just a little example about that. You know, I had taken over Anne Sathers in 1980, and I had to move. You know, my landlord was Tokyo Rose, the Tokyo Rose. And she gave me a five-year lease and no options and no renewals. And then I had to move, because they were remodeling the entire condo complex. So I moved into a funeral home, okay? Hurson Funeral Home, which is one of the oldest established names. And I couldn't, I had to keep operations open. You know, we talk about COVID, I'm talking back in the day. I had to stay open, because I had no money to buy a build, finally buy a building and renovate it into a restaurant. And so I couldn't shut down the restaurant. I mean, I had no cash, you know. So I went to Bernie, and I said, Bernie, I got to keep open. And we literally connected two buildings illegally. He did, or he let me. And we did that for about 18 months, okay? Until my new restaurant was open a million dollars later, and people complaining, I like the old rat-infested restaurants that I had, you know. I got no ticket, but I kept my Alderman, I kept my Alderman very aware of what the heck we're doing here. And that's all he asked. He said, you know, it's not unsafe, but it was illegal, okay? And so that was just one of a few stories. The second story I'm going to tell you is, well, Bernie's old school, that's minimum, okay? And but he grew up, as you see, he grew up in Lakeview, went to Hawthorne, went to Lane, et cetera. But I had a, the neighborhood was changing, for the better. And actually, I love the other adage, you know, we talk, when you said, "Some of my best friends are gay," right? Over the years, and now if somebody says that, you know, will be social mediized out of existence, you know. But Bernie's best friends and residents were an emerging LGBT community. So before Boyz Town, which was in 98, according to this, you know. But he, as this resolution said, you know, he's a good politician. He saw the winds, he saw the need for change. And his life was really streets, and he was a ward superintendent. And the whole idea that we can't forget is his vision about recycling. You know, he knew what to do, he knew how to get the council ahead of its time on that issue alone. So I do want to mention another little story, because it brings Chairman Burke into the question. He and I know this, and not too many people know this. So it was about, I don't know, '92, and the AIDS epidemic was, obviously, you know, government was not doing anything about it. But there was a lot of talk about Bernie almost lost an election in 1987 to Dr. Ron Sable, who was a Cook County physician, openly gay. And after, he also ran, so that was in '87. '91, Dr. Sable runs against Bernie Hanson again. Well, the difference between '87 and '91 was amazing, because he narrowly lost. Bernie, obviously, things happened after '87, including Human Rights Ordinance and some other things. But when Dr. Sable ran against him the second time, he got smashed. He got, I mean, it was just unbelievable that Bernie was so successful in just four short years in changing the image and his progression. So while he was old school, like all of us, we got to see the winds of change. We got to be aware of what we're going. But the story I want to say about that one was that there were people that said, Tom Tunney, you should run for Alderman. After Dr. Sable lost that second time in '91, I'm like, why would I run against Bernie Hanson? You know, Bernie's been too good to me, too good to the community, for me to think about. But I went to, I had been on the City's Economic Development Commission under Rich Daley from '89. And that's how Chairman Burke and I got to know each other better. But we knew each other before then. He and his wife were very, very instrumental on a lot of AIDS support that we did. But I went to, I called Ed Burke, and I said, you know, I'm kind of thinking about running for Alderman. And what would you think about it? Because again, I was a colleague on the commission. And he goes, let me give you some advice. He said, everybody has their time. This is not your time, Tom. And so be it. That was in '92. And I think for some perspective, is that while Bernie and I were not close, we were respectful of each other. And I would never cross Bernie Hanson because of what he did for me personally. And I'll start, I'll end with this quote. When I was a young kid, when I first bought Anne Sathers, my cousin told me, you get yourself settled, get that business ground, but then go meet your Alderman. Because an Alderman can make or break you as a business. I'll never forget that, even though Jack Merlow was my Alderman at the time. I'll never forget that, even though Jack Merlo was my Alderman at the time. Bernie became my Alderman within a year. And I always remember that. And I will say this to the end. Bernie Hansen made me the person I am. So when the Alderman can make or break you, he certainly made me what I am and what I do today for the city and for the 44th Ward. So thank you, Bernie. Your family, actually, his family was this council and his community, as much as his children. And I think for a lot, he sacrificed so much for community, for the LGBT, for the Lakeview community, that I think it really did, it did affect his health. Because he cared so much. And that's why I'm as passionate about my alleys, my potholes, my cleaning. My, because he taught me that every constituent is important. Every, every service is king. Service is queen. And that I will always, that's where he and I have always agreed upon. But he certainly set an example for me and for many of us to be successful in our jobs and to get, hopefully get reelected again and again. So thank you, Bernie, to the family. And I consider you, as many, as many other elected officials and judges and stuff, he is family to us. He's been family to us for many, many years. And may he rest in peace. And then I wanted to move the, adopt the resolution by a rise in vote, please. If it's a...
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Chairman Tony. Thank you for the eloquent words. And certainly, we send our condolences to Alderman Hansen's family and friends and colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Chairman Harris, the Agreed Calendar.
Thank you, Madam President. I've received from the Clerk Andrea Valencia a toll of 126 items proposed for the Agreed Calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and tributary resolutions from the following Alderman. Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Dow, Alderman Harris, Alderman Garza, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Tavarez, Alderman Secho Lopez, Alderman Roboros, Alderman Viegas, Alderman Napolitano, Alderman Tony, and Alderman Osterman. I move the passage of the Agreed Calendar in the omnibus, please.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President.
Next new business. Madam Clerk, please call the roll, beginning with the first.
Claims, free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. An exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Hopkins has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 2-100, by adding a new section 2-100-105 regarding hiring of duties of ward superintendents. This is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Hopkins and others, Alderman Hopkins also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 300 West Division Street, 60 West Superior Street, and 919 North Michigan Avenue, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman King has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 2937 South Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Drive and 3357 South Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Harris has proposed order for the issuance of a permit for signed signboard at 9421 South Stony Island Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Beal has proposed order for the issuance of permits for a signed signboard at 109th and South Thode Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Thompson has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, Chapters 2-32 and 2-51, by adding a new section 2-32-165 and modifying section 2-51-050 to establish and maintain grant operation openness database, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Cardenas has proposed resolution to call for President Joseph Biden and the United States Congress to pass infrastructure bill to help combat climate control. And the call on the Commissioner of the Department of Water Management to publish reports detailing causes of persistent and repetitive flooding across Chicago, which is referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alderman Tavarez has proposed ordinance to call for hearings on strategies to combat dangerous drag racing and drifting events on public and private property, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Tavarez also has proposed ordinance for extension of designation of the 1st, 4th, 8th, 18th, 22nd, 23rd, 28th, and 29th precincts of the 23rd Ward as restricted residential zone prohibiting additional shared housing units and vacation rentals, which are referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Secho Lopez has a proposed resolution for expression of support for passage of the Illinois Senate Bill 1565 to create voter registration affidavit allowing non-citizens of the United States to register to vote in school board elections, which is referred to the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alderman Burnett and others have proposed orders for amendment of municipal code titles 4, 8, and 17, by modifying various sections and adding a new Article 7, the Chapter 4-156, to regulate sports wagering, which will be...
The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Can the clerk inform me on when that ordinance was submitted to the clerk's office?
Eight o'clock last night.
Madam President, under the rules of this body that we adopted, anything that is not submitted to the clerk's office before 10:00 PM Monday should not be submitted to this body as being accepted.
Alderman Beal, I do not believe that's a city council rule. That was a clerk's process rule. And Madam Clerk will speak to the issue.
So many of you know that we put in a process of a, of a policy in the clerk's office to have anything matters before you, which I told you off, off of the line, before, for a process rule because of COVID. And we are working on our city council modernization project. So when that's over, we'll decide and work with all of you whether that stays in place.
Madam Clerk, with all due respect, we adopted, based on the information that you provided to this body, that there was a deadline of 10:00 AM, 48 hours before city council, for ordinances, resolutions, orders, or whatever to be adopted by this body. Is that correct?
Right, it's a clerk policy that we put in place with COVID. It is not an actual role of the body. That will be, when we do our city council modernization project, that will be a rule that will have to be decided by this body to be an actual role.
Okay, so once again, the rules that we set in place are not being followed and procedures are not being followed.
Happy to talk offline about making sure that we get substantive materials and keep city council moving forward.
Okay, Madam Clerk, which ordinance, which committee is that ordinance being sent to?
It is going to a Joint Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, License and Consumer Protection.
And I call traffic.
Okay. After two committees have been called, we'll go to rules. Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
Alderman Burnett also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 1001 West North Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Irvin has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 17-3-0503D, by modifying certain pedestrian retail street designations on portion of West Taylor Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Wagasback and Alderman Smith have proposed order to call on Chicago Office of Inspector General to negotiate and present intergovernmental agreement to provide aid and investigative capacity to the Chicago Park District's Inspector General in investigating sexual assault, abuse, and harassment among Chicago Park District lifeguards, which is referred to the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez and others have proposed resolution to call on the United States Congress to, to create pathways to citizenship for undocumented immigrants through budget reconciliation, which is referred to the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alderman Ramirez Rosa has proposed orders for an honorary street designation as Betsy Reinsdorf Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Ramirez Rosa also has a proposed orders for an honorary street designation as Oglea El Coraga Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Viegas has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, Sections 4-60-023, to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of North Central Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Viegas has proposed resolution to call for hearings to review, for review of charges made to the Department of Buildings Complaint-Based Inspections, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Viegas also has proposed resolution to call for update on replacement of lead service lines since introduction of lead replacement programs, which is referred to Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alderman Vasquez Jr. has a proposed order for amendment of municipal code, Sections 4-60-023, to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of West Peterson Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Vasquez also has proposed ordinance to call for the Department of Assets, Information, and Services to conduct review of assessment of upgrades of the 311 system, which is referred to Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Alderman Napolitano and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 8-4 and Chapter 8-20, by modifying various sections and adding new sections regarding looting, mob action, vandalism, and unlawful possession of firearms or firearm ammunition, which is, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Two committees having been called, the Committee on Public Safety and the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Riley has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, Section 10-8-337, regarding prohibition on issuance of film production staging permits in certain residential parking permit zones, which is referred to Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Alderman Riley also has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, Section 7-40-060, regarding requirements to permit animals in retail food establishments, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Riley also has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, Section 9-110-150, to prohibit petticoats from using devices to create or amplify sound during specified hours, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Riley also has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, Section 9-48-045, to prohibit operation of petticoats between 6:00 PM and 9:00 AM within areas bonded by Ohio Street, Wall Street, Michigan Avenue, and the Chicago River, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Riley also has proposed orders for refunding of special assessment improvement bonds, Series 2002 Lake Shore East Project, through issuance of special assessment improvement bonds refunding Series 2021 Lake Shore East Project, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Riley and others have proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 4-4, by adding a new section 4-4-025 regarding installment plan for license fee payments, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Tony has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 7-38-117, by establishing mobile food vehicle stand at 3627 North Southport Avenue, 3420 North Lincoln Avenue, 3241 North Lincoln Avenue, and 817 West Belmont Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Tony also has proposed ordinance for repeal of a taxicab stand number 810 on portion of West Belmont Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Gardner has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of North Milwaukee Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Martin has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 17-9 and 17-10, by adding new section 17-9-0120 and modifying 17-10-0101C to regulate shared kitchens primarily used for takeout and delivery, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Haddon has proposed resolution to call the United States government to cease spending federal tax dollars on nuclear weapons and embrace the UN Treaty on Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons and make global nuclear disarmament a main focus on national security policy, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Haddon and others have proposed resolution for submission of a public question by referendum to Chicago voters at the November 8, 2022 general election, proposing increase in City of Chicago real estate transfer tax for purposes of providing resources for affordable housing and services to combat homelessness, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Your Honor, that concludes all the medic introductions. It's R 2021-891.
Alderman Cardenas, I believe your request is too late. All right, next up, approval of the Journal, Alderman Mitchell.
I am not aware of any corrections to the Journal for June 25, 2021, or July 21, and move that we be approved by the affirmative vote of all members present for the roll call to determine qualm.
Just to make sure the record is clear, did you mean July 2?
Thank you for that correction. I meant July 2.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
It takes the village.
The motion is carried. Unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am aware of one item of unfinished business that was noticed pursuant to Rule 41. It is in ordinance to amend the municipal code of Chicago to authorize expedited, expedited signs and permits. I defer to Chairman Mitz.
Chairman Mitz.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item that I've noticed up pursuant to Rule 41. It's an ordinance to amend the municipal code of Chicago to authorize expedited signs and permits. This is Article 7 of the Chiba Strong Ordinance, which was divided and deferred and published. It appeared in the Journal of Decisions of June 25, 2021, I understand that a substitute ordinance has been agreed upon and distributed. And I'll defer to my colleague, Alderman Riley, to describe and move acceptance of this substitute.
The chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to provide just a bit of context and then, I'm sorry. Actually, I think I was, I think the mayor wanted me to describe it first, but I'm happy to move to accept the substitute before we describe the ordinance itself.
I think you should describe it and then move to.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Given the concerns expressed with the public way use permit reform language contained in the Chiba Strong legislative package last month, Legislative Reference Bureau, our city council lawyers, and I have been working with Lightfoot Administration, the Department of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection and Law to find a reasonable compromise. I'm very pleased to report we have reached a fair and reasonable compromise that results in much faster issuance of the vast majority of public way use permits for businesses, cutting literally months out of the process. The ordinance also retains city council's authority to determine the outcome of permits in those rare cases Alderman and the commissioner disagree. I want to take you through how the revised language reads. And I think it'll become quite clear that this is a reasonable compromise. Public way use permit applications would proceed as follows. If the local alderperson and VACP agree that the public way use application meets the code requirements for a permit, the permit is issued without need for an ordinance to be passed by city council. This will impact the overwhelming majority of permit applications and could save up to 60 days in time to the issuance to the applicant. So the applicant would get that permit right away, rather than waiting for it to go through the committee and full council process. This impacts more than 95% of the applications we process as a council. If the local alderperson and VACP agree that the public way use application does not meet the code requirements for a permit, the permit application will be denied and the applicant has the right to appeal that denial. However, if the local alderperson thinks the public way use permit application does not meet the code requirements for a permit, but VACP thinks the application does meet the requirements, the per... the requirements, the permit applicant with the assistance of VACP may submit to city council an applicant-sponsored ordinance granting approval of a public way use permit for the city council to consider. So I think that this is an artful compromise. Our goal here was to get permits in the hands of business owners much faster. This ordinance accomplishes that goal while also preserving our authority in those rare instances where we have disagreement with the administration. I want to thank Mayor Lightfoot, Chairman Mitz, VACP Commissioner Esquireno, Acting Commissioner Ken Meyer, Law Department, and our excellent lawyers in the Legislative Reference Bureau for helping make this compromise possible. And that said, Madam President, I move that the substitute ordinance be placed before the body for consideration.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you.
Chairman Mitz.
I move the substitute ordinance just adopted by the first favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Chair recognizes Alman Beal.
Madam President, while I totally appreciate and respect all the work that my colleague has put into this substitute and revision, but I do believe that something of this magnitude, something of this quality really should go back before committee and be heard in a committee meeting where we can have the Commissioner come and testify before us to discuss something of this magnitude. And I'm not taking away the hard work that my colleagues have put into this, but this I think is too important of an issue for us to pass something in this body with a substitute without having it being vetted thoroughly. So my motion is to send it back to committee for discussion.
Chair recognizes Alman Riley.
Chairman, Madam President, to my colleagues' concern, we have been negotiating in earnest for some time now, and truth be told, the eureka moment wasn't reached until yesterday morning. But we did work very quickly, I think, with the government affairs staff as well as the Legislative Reference Bureau to get the draft language out as quickly as humanly possible so that members would have a chance to review that language and the one-page fact sheet. And in the correspondence I sent to all fifty colleagues yesterday, we offered to answer any questions or concerns that colleagues may have. I believe in addition, Commissioner Esquireno and her staff also made that offer to each of the aldermen here. And as I understand from Legislative Reference Bureau, they received a few questions from aldermen, the aldermen were satisfied with those answers. And I can tell you that in polling the, my colleagues, it sounds that the majority of us are willing to proceed with this and move forward so that we can finally cap off the Chabiz Strong ordinance and get this meaningful relief to these business owners who want to get these permits faster. So I do believe that Chairman Mitz already has a motion pending, and I'm not sure that my colleague, Alman Beal, is in order.
Let me go to Alman Smith, and we'll deal with the procedural issue.
I just wanted to echo the point that Alman Riley just made, that I'm not sure that Alman Beal is in order. This is a two-sentence change, I think, that really solves a lot of problems for everybody. Let's vote. Thank you, Madam President.
Question. Let me refer members to Rule twenty-one, which lists the order of motions. The motion that was pending before Alman Beal rose to speak was to number five, to move the previous question, which takes precedence over your motion, Alman Beal, which is referred back to committee. So by procedure of the body, the motion to move the previous question takes precedent and must be voted on. If that motion fails, then we can, your motion certainly can be entertained at that point. So ladies and gentlemen, unless there are others who wish to speak, the motion is pending before this body is a motion to accept the substitute and approve it. To vote on the substitute at this point. So, Matt, are you moving for a roll call vote?
I was gonna move that, that renew my motion to move passage of the substitute ordinance with the first favorable roll call vote of Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider with, with the exception of Alman Beal voting no. Now if you want to roll.
Recognizes Alman Beal, would you prefer a roll call vote, because there is an objection?
I actually prefer that we adopt the substitute without trying to pass it, it sounds like she's trying to pass it before accepting the substitute. There was no, it was not adopted.
So let me, let me just clarify, I believe that what Chairman Mitz is attempting is, in the first instance, to adopt the substitute, then there must be a second vote on whether or not the substitute is approved by the body. So it's a two-step process. So...
You can accept the substitute.
Okay. All right, so hearing no objection, so ordered, the substitute is accepted. Question, the pending question is to have the body now move to approve the substitute again pursuant to Rule twenty-one, that takes precedent. Alman Beal's motion is to refer the substitute back to committee. So ladies and gentlemen, what you will be voting on is whether or not Alman Beal's motion to refer the matter back to a committee should be approved. And before we take that vote, the Chair recognizes all the women had. Now, you're taking your hand down?
Take my hand.
Okay, all right, so the pending motion, which we will resolve by roll call, is Alman Beal's motion to refer the matter back to committee. A yes vote is to refer, a no vote is to, is no, and to vote on it at this moment. Madam Clerk.
Alman Lasfara.
No.
Alman Lasfara is a no. Alman Hopkins.
No.
Alman Hopkins is a no. Alman Dow. Alman King. Alman Hairston. Alman Sawyer. Alman Mitchell.
No.
Alman Mitchell is a no. Alman Harris.
No.
Alman Harris is a no. Alman Beal.
Yep.
Alman Beal is a yes. Alman Zalaski Garza.
No.
Alman Zalaski Garza is a no. Alman Thompson.
Nope.
Thompson is a no. Alman Cardenas.
No.
Tom, Cardenas is a no. Alman Quinn.
No.
Quinn is a no. Alman Burke.
No.
Burke is a no. Lopez, Alman Lopez. Alman Coleman. Alman Coleman is a no. Alman Moore. Alman Curtis.
No.
Alman Curtis is a no. Alman O'Shea. Alman Taylor. Alman Taylor is a no. Alman Brookins. Alman Brookins is a no. Alman Rodriguez. Rodriguez is a no. Alman Tabarez. Alman Tabarez is a no. Alman Scott. Alman Tito Lopez. Tito Lopez is a no. Alman Maldonado. Alman Burnett.
No.
Burnett is a no. Alman Urban.
No.
Urban is a no. Alman Talafaro. Talafaro is a no. Reboy, Alman Reboyas.
No.
Reboyas is a no. Alman Cardona. Alman Wag, Alman Cardona. No. Cardona is a no. Alman Wagasback.
No.
Wagasback is a no. Alman Rodriguez Sanchez.
No.
Rodriguez Sanchez is a no. Alman Austin.
No.
Austin is a no. Alman Ramirez Rosa. Alman Viegas. Alman Mitz. Mitz is a no. Alman Spisato.
Spisato is a no.
Spisato is a no. Alman Nugent.
No.
Nugent is a no. Alman Vasquez.
No.
Alman Vasquez is a no. Alman Napolitano.
No.
Napolitano is a no. Alman Riley. Riley is a no. Alman Smith.
No.
Smith is a no. Alman Tony.
No.
Tony is a no. Alman Gardner. Alman Kappelman. Kappelman is a no. Alman Martin.
No.
Martin is a no. Alman Osterman. Alman Haddon.
No.
Haddon is a no. Alman Silverstein.
No.
Silverstein is a no.
The yays are one, the nays are thirty-six. The motion to refer back to committee fails. Is there a motion? Chairman Mitz.
Madam Chairman, I renew my motion to pass the substitute ordinance by the thirty-six favorable vote, roll call, with the exception of Alman Beal voting no.
Chairman Mitz, are you asking for...
No, I move passage of the substitute on just adopted by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
By the mandatory process.
With the exception of...
With the exception of Alman Beal.
Right. Hearing no further objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
Alman, Alman Mitchell, is there any other unfinished business?
Madam President, I am not aware of any unfinished business.
All right, miscellaneous business, Alman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
The date and time of the next meeting?
I've handed an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Mr. Clark.
Beatdordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago, section one, that the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Tuesday, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, beginning at ten o'clock AM in the City Council Chamber on the second floor of City Hall.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought, go ahead and repeat.
To be held on Tuesday, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, beginning at ten o'clock AM in the City Council Chamber on the second floor of City Hall, one-twenty-one North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. If prior to then, the Commissioner of Health issues a written determination that an in-person meeting of the City Council is not practical or prudent due to COVID-19, the next regular meeting of the City Council, in accordance with applicable law, shall be conducted by video conference and shall provide for remote participation and remote viewing by members of the public. Any such written determination will be posted in the city clerk's website, along with an amended meeting agenda, indicating that the meeting will be conducted by video conference by ten o'clock AM on Friday, September tenth, two thousand twenty-one. Section two, this order shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Ladies and gentlemen, two important things to note. Number one, no August meeting. Number two, happy summer. Number two, the meeting in September is on a Tuesday, not a Wednesday, Tuesday in deference to the Jewish holiday. So please make sure you note your calendar, and actually, number three, it will be fully in person for members of the body. There will be no remote option for members of the body. Chair recognizes Alman Burnett. Correct, September fourteenth. Alman Mitchell, do you move passage?
I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Alman Mitchell, the omnibus.
Madam President, I move the matters in the omnibus to be passed by the affirmative vote of all the members present for the roll call to determine quorum.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Alman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move that we reconsider that vote.
All those in favor of reconsidering the matters in the omnibus signify by saying aye?
No.
All those opposed say no?
No.
The nays have it, the motion for consideration fails. Alman Mitchell, motion for adjournment.
There being no further business before the body, I move that we adjourn by the affirmative vote of all members present for the roll call to determine quorum.
Hearing no objection, and given that your colleagues are fleeing, we are adjourned.
Emma Mitz, you're out of order.
Happy summer, folks.